All right. Looks like we're back and ready to go. Sam, we're good? Okay. Welcome back. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We are continuing on where we left off. Item 6.10, 1:00 p.m., consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Smart Easy Pay, Inc., also known as Easy Smart Pay. We have our treasurer, tax collector, and we also have CSAC Finance Corporation here. If you want to come up as well, that way if we have any questions, you can be in the comfort zone. Welcome and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Patrick Sullivan, treasurer, tax collector. And I'm here with Chase Brofman from the CSAC Finance Corporation and Easy Smart Pay. So this item is to consider agreement for Easy Smart Pay. This is a program that came out of CSAC originally. It, its goal is to allow people to make, taxpayers to make monthly payments. Right now, we don't have an option for taxpayers to pay property taxes and installments beyond the first and second that's permitted under R and T code. This program would allow taxpayers that opportunity to break those payments out into 12 monthly installments. Then for each of those installments, Smart Easy Pay would make those payments via wire to the county. Just a few points to highlight about this program. Many other counties have already gone to it. I did have some questions when it originally came to my attention. There are some elements of the service that I did not think would necessarily be valuable to Lake County. There was the ability to make installment payments directly to Easy Smart Pay. We don't really require that. We have the ability to take those payments directly via credit card or electronic payment. But what we really don't have any access to is their kind of flagship product, the monthly payments. One of the other just questions I had was about how they run their investment program. They use a model that's very similar to the requirements that treasurer tax collectors operate under in government code. But because they are not licensed or regulated in the way that we are as a private entity, they have the ability to do, they would have the ability to do things differently than we do and maybe engage in, one of the concerns I had was that they may be able to engage in investments that would not be in keeping with our practices. So one of the things that we worked out was that there would be notice if they were to change their practices. That notice would be provided to the county so that we would have the opportunity to get out of the program if we felt that was appropriate. I mean, I have no reason to believe that would actually happen, but it's just one of the things I wanted to cover before I considered bringing it to your board. So that's the rough background of the program. If you have specific questions about the program itself or want to hear more detail, I think Chase is happy to provide that.
Do you have any further comments before we open it up for the board?
Well, I thank Mr. Sullivan for his due diligence along this process. Thank you, Chair Sabatier, and members of the board for taking the time to hear this item. Yeah, as Mr. Sullivan mentioned, this was born out of the CSAC Finance Corporation. This is a program that counties wanted. We understand that you have legislative as well as operational constraints when it comes to offering partial payment for property tax, and so that's really what this program was started out of. This is no cost to constituents to enroll. There's no onboard continuous cost to them except for the exact property tax bill. Of course, there's the applicable transaction rates, which are the lowest in the state, 0% if they use ACH and 1.99 if they use a credit or debit card. And so this has been adopted by 33 of the 58 counties. We've heard very good feedback from treasurer tax collectors as well as constituents alike that they appreciate the service. So I appreciate your consideration today looking at this item, and I look forward to a potential partnership with Lake County, Mr. Sullivan's office, and adding this value to your constituents.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Paeska.
This is a need that we've had for a long time with our constituents. It is really difficult to make those payments twice a year for some folks, so I appreciate this. And I also know that our treasurer tax collector put a lot of effort into finding a level of comfort here lined out, so I appreciate both of you for putting that time in.
Thank you. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just super quick question. I see the monthlies are in there, but semi-annual is not. Is that a technological hurdle or is that not part of your business model?
By design.
It's on.
Yeah, I would take responsibility for that aspect that you're noting there. Smart Easy Pay does have the ability to take those semi-annual payments, but I requested that those not be included for Lake County, partially because, as I stated, we have the ability to take those payments. When we take them, they go directly into our bank account where we're then able to invest them and earn those returns. So if Smart Easy Pay were to take those large installment payments for us, I don't find for Lake County taxpayers, there's a significant added benefit because we already offer that service. And the risk to the county is that's where we lose the opportunity for interest and other investment earnings. By limiting it to the monthly payments, it restricts the number of people who would probably utilize this program. It would be those that have previously expressed the need. I mean, we're aware there's that need out there. There is that request, but those making the full installment payments earlier are unlikely, in our opinion, to be in that need. So yes, it was by design that we restricted that to ensure that the impact to our investment program would be minimal.
Thank you for that. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, I've spoken with Chase, most recently at the conference that we were at. I guess I should preface it with, I appreciate everything that CSAC does and attempts to do, but I just can't get on board with this one. I appreciate the work that's already been done to minimize the risk to the county as well as the individuals, but I would suspect that most people that want to do monthly payments probably have more of a struggling financial status than those that can just pay off the biannual payments. And the fact that you are not necessarily a bank, you don't have FDIC coverage, you don't necessarily have, yes, you might tell us that you're going to change your investment style, but what does that do to those individuals that are involved and already have given you money? Does that mean that automatically their money comes back if we cancel? Does that mean that they might have the chance to benefit or lose from that change in investment style? I just, if it was more like a bank situation with some extra coverage, I don't feel creating a risk for those potentially already in risk is what I see as the best. And I would also assume that, and the reason I say that is because we would be advocating that this is a program that you can use. We're not advocating for any other banks in the area, and if you happen to be able to sell this product directly to the consumer, then at that point, that's between you and the consumer, and the county doesn't get in the middle of it. But if I'm going to tell a constituent, hey, as a county, I'm telling you that this program is here, but there's risks and something happens, then I feel like that that's not us trying to provide the best guidance to our constituents. So I know that you and I had discussed this. I've been pretty consistent on my comments, and today's just not the day that I can support this. So if there's no further comment, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Raise your hand in Zoom. Come on up to the microphone in the chamber. Seeing none in either one, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I didn't see recommended action on the staff report, so I'm kind of struggling with
the form of the motion.
Sorry. So the recommended action would be to approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to take up item, I don't believe she came back, so we are going to take up item 7.5, consideration of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the regions of the University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources and the County of Lake. Or, am I moving too fast?
Yes.
I'd be waiting for Mr. Barnes?
Yes, please.
Okay. I apologize. And I guess let's go ahead and take up item 7.2, consideration of appointment of District Four Supervisor Michael Green to the Lake County Board of Supervisors chair for remainder of his term. Just a little caveat clarification, this would be as of 12/17, not after the decision made today, meaning in two minutes that would take effect. And so just a brief summary based on the memo that I already wrote, Mr. Green has been with us since October of 2022, and I've appreciated his presence in addition to the team. And since he will no longer be a board supervisor as of January, upon swearing in new officers, I wanted to give him the chance to be a board chair, even though it would be a very minuscule amount of time. And so I was hoping to vacate my seat as of the next meeting, and I let him take the lead with Vice Chair Crandall remaining in his vice chair position. I did speak with Vice Chair Crandall just to make sure that that was appropriate and wouldn't be offensive to do that. So I did not get to speak with Mr. Green, Supervisor Green, which means that it was a bit of a surprise to see this on the agenda. But as you know, the Brown Act prohibits us from speaking to too many people. And so I just wanted to open that up for discussion and see what the board's will is. Vice Chair Crandall?
Obviously, I agreed with this, so I think it would be a good outgoing thing for him to have. I know, Mo, you've spent probably like three times as chair, right? Two?
No, one time, just the pandemic.
Really?
Second time was going to be this year, so.
Oh, that's.
The pandemic was good enough for me. I got a lot of lovely notes during that year, so.
It was shocking.
Just continues year after year.
All right.
Supervisor Green. I just want to thank Chair Sabatier for thinking of me. I think thank you is the appropriate term, and I'd certainly be delighted to hold the gavel once if the board so wills, but I feel it's up to you to make that decision and not me, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Want to open it up for public comment on this item? Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no movement in the chamber, no hands in the Zoom room. Bring it back to the board for action. And again, if it's possible with the caveat of as of the meeting of 12/17.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Supervisor Michael Green to Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the meeting, for the rest of his term, starting on the December 17 meeting. Is that good?
County Council will say yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we still have 15 minutes. Let's see if we can get through our weekly calendars. So 7.1, we'll start with Supervisor Green.
Guess I'm chairing next week. Pay attention to that meeting with C.A.O. Parker. When does the chair normally meet with C.A.O. Parker? C.A.O. Parker?
Agenda review. Whenever the chair would like.
Okay. I guess he'll get back to me on that. Okay. Big Valley is having a grand opening of their fuel center, and that's super exciting. 11 to 2, I believe it is. I see a special meeting of first five Lake in the afternoon. I hope that's in Lakeport. Have a medical appointment on Thursday. I'm alternate, but on Monday, I see a meeting for Blue Ribbon Committee. Is that right?
Yeah.
And.
GPM clearly.
Okay. I guess I'll be meeting with C.A.O. Parker also on Monday and probably sometime, maybe lucky, Friday, the 13th to go over agenda stuff. And that's about all I got.
So I'm actually going to cut off our calendars. I see that, I don't have my glasses, but I believe it's Director Jones that just came in. I want to make sure we get to her item. She's been waiting all day, and I apologize that we could not get to it earlier. And so we're going to shift over to item 7.4, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Archway Recovery Services for ASAM levels 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.5, and withdrawal management levels 1 and 2 in the amount of $1,750,000 for fiscal year 2425. Director Jones.
Thank you so much, Chair Sabatier. As your board and the community is aware, Lake County Behavioral Health Services joined the Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery System on July 1st of this year. Proudly, we are six months in. One of our biggest barriers to overcome for successful implementation was detoxification residential treatment services. So there are people who need medical level intervention in a residential setting to get healthy, and we're required by the state to provide that service. Those services are, the costs are enumerated in the contract. They're industry standard. We did a request for qualifications from all contiguous, Lake Counties contiguous to Lake County, who are licensed with the state to provide these services and did outreach to them to determine if they would do that, if they would contract with us. And so this represents the first contract that's a result of that request for qualifications process, and we're very excited to bring this service onboard for our beneficiaries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you, the site, it's in Fairfield?
Yes, they have their corporate office there, and then they actually have a campus, a treatment campus on the state hospital campus, and they're expanding facilities. So that's where their main business administration is, in Fairfield.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions and comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Just an acronym I don't recognize. ASAM?
Oh, yes. Addiction Society Med, I, you got me on the $100 question there, sir. It's the Society of Addiction Medicine and Treatment. ASAM is a nationally recognized and accredited standard of treatment.
So these are levels of care?
Yes. It's a, it's 3.7 specifically, ASAM level 3.7.
Oh, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Just a brief question. I apologize for not asking this earlier to you. How many patients are we looking that will be taken care of with this 1.75 million? I don't see a breakdown of cost per hour. It's obviously going to be based on billables.
It is based on their availability. So we did not purchase or lease a bed. That's not a good business practice. So we're on a queue, and when they have beds available, if they have one that's for Lake County, because they have to serve their home county first, they will reach out to other counties and offer them a bed. And then on a case-by-case basis, not every person is right for the same type of program, so that's why it's nice to have a variety of different facilities and milieus. So it's projected to be at a very high utilization because we have incredible detoxification needs. So we wanted to make sure we had sufficient contract coverage to meet that anticipated increase in demand.
Okay. And then, so we pay them for the services provided, and then we get reimbursed through Medi-Cal?
That's correct.
And is that at 100%?
It is at a pass-through depending upon that person's aid code, whether or not they have traditional Medi-Cal or American Expansion, ACAC, ACA coverage. There's, it's a very complex algorithm, unfortunately.
Right. Okay. Well, we need this, but I'd love to see the outcomes and hear about how many patients, how many people we sent over there, their success rates and the overall reimbursement. Did we, did we have a wash of what was spent and what we received, or what was the loss to your department because of the, obviously, the community, the community benefits and gains? But just until we do it, can't know for sure, but this is needed, so. Appreciate you bringing this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, in response, you may be, you're familiar with the EQRO assessment that, all the acronyms have gone from my mind for some reason. But anyways, it's an annual assessment. It's a health check on our mental health plan. So you've seen it for our mental health plan. Well, as opting into the Drug Medi-Cal ODS, now it's a combined EQRO, so you'll get a total health plan report next time.
The ODS thing has made some great changes, so really happy that we made those changes. So thank you so much. Big number, but big need, so we'll take a look at that and happy to approve this and move it forward. Opening up for public comments. Anyone wishes to speak on this item? I see no movement in the chamber. I see no hands in the Zoom room. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve agreement between County of Lake and Archway Recovery Services for ASAM levels 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.5, and withdrawal management levels 1 and 2 in the amount of $1,750,000 for fiscal year 2425 and authorize board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming back and glad we were able to get you in. I see that Mr. Barnes is also in the back, so let's go ahead and take up item 7.5, consideration of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the regions of the University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources and the County of Lake for partnership for the provision of the University of California Cooperative Extension Program and authorizing the county administrative officer to sign the MOU on behalf of the county. We have Mr. Carter and Mr. Barnes from UC Extension. Welcome.
There we go. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Noon, board. Thank you for your time today. Matthew Barnes, County Director slash Area Director, UCC-E, Lake County, here today to present the partnership agreement between the University of California Cooperative Extension and the County of Lake for the term of 2025 to 2030. Okay, so before we get started, just want to acknowledge the Cooperative Extension, Office Staff, the UC Grants and Contracts Department for their assistance on this. Also appreciations for the guidance and support of C.A.O. Parker and the Admin Office, and to the board who provided valuable input during the process of putting this together. Today, I'm just going to go over a bit of historical context, how we got here, and just a few key innovations that we've updated in the MOU. So the historical context here, the partnership is longstanding since 1921. University of California Cooperative Extension is part of the land grant university system. So our farm advisors have been here in Lake County consulting and providing research throughout the evolution of Lake County's agricultural journey. Currently, we're working off of the 1963 MOU that provided the foundational partnership for the, how we work together. So today, with this new MOU, we hope to provide an advanced structure and program plan that's going to ensure that the enduring impact here is driven for the next five years and then building off that through Lake County's agriculture, youth development, and into sustainable So the first key innovation here in the updated MOU, we plan to strengthen our communication and reporting to the board of supervisors and also to the community. We, in Section 3F, you'll find that under our responsibilities, we will be reporting a detailed plan of work and a, for the upcoming year, and a detailed report of work for the previous year. This expands on the summary of work that we currently provide. Through advanced outreach and communication, we hope the result will be further collaborations within county departments and with county stakeholders, so our report of work can be The rest of the innovations here can be found in Attachment A, which is our program plan of work. And integration of research-based expertise, what we want to do is collaborate with the county and the county departments at the planning level, whether that be RFP planning, program planning, so we can provide a cost savings for the county through access to our most up-to-date research and expertise. Next, and this would be a first for cooperative extensions out of the 58 counties we serve, is to include an emergency response support in our MOU. So what we envision here is providing technical expertise in post-recovery services, whether that be a fire, an earthquake, environmental impacts. So an example of that would be areas like soil and water testing in post-recovery, agricultural impact assessments, the, our viticulture advisor is currently doing studies on smoke taint for grapevines, so that's something that has been common. The role would remain advisory and align with, with our mission and resources. Also a first in the 58 counties we serve would be to include the tribal nations' collaborations. Remaining in an advisory role, we want to respect tribal sovereignty and build our collaborative efforts with the tribes of Lake County. We believe that doing this will facilitate collaborative projects with the county, and we can really be the bridge between some of the environmental impact projects. So beginning in January, we'll be launching our Next 100 Years Campaign in Lake County, enhancing public outreach with materials that align with our board presentations. We would like to schedule monthly presentations here to the board that will showcase each of our academic advisors as well as our programs. And overall, as you know, it's been about six months since I've been here, but from, from what I've seen, Lake County is, is just really collaborative with, with our programs, from the Pear and Walnut Boards to the Wine Alliance to our board itself. It's, I think there is a bright future of collaboration here. So with that, I will open up to any specific questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Supervisor Paeska?
So I appreciate this presentation, building on the, the meeting that we had, Supervisor Simon and I had with you and your team about a month ago or so.
Yeah.
And I think bringing those board presentations monthly so that we're really aware of what the new programs are, the new board members are aware, our new directors, we have a lot of new staff. I think there's a lot of ways that we can collaborate and cross-support, so thank you for squeezing that in. I know that was probably the biggest thing that came out of our meeting that day.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so thank you.
Agreed. Agreed. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a technical point. So, there's a reso and there's an MOU, and within the reso, we authorize CAO Parker to sign the MOU. But on the reso, I see signature lines for CAO Parker as the clerk to the Board and also for the Board Chair to sign the reso like normal. So, it all looks right, but I just want to make sure all the signature lines are right and that the, it won't be a motion, it will just be offering the resolution will be sufficient. Yes? No?
It would be sufficient, yes. I believe so. Everything looks good to me. I, I learned a little bit by just even reading it over the MOU in the first place. Looks like you get funding twice a year and then that's how you expend the funds that we have. There was conversation, at least, or on the memo it brought up, financials, but this doesn't change the budget process that we already have. Just puts things in writing.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that, just because that's important to, to make sure we understand that. There is one small typo that I just want to make sure when we offer the resolution, it's as amended, and the second line, it should say agriculture and natural resources. And if we can just get that into the offering of the resolution as amended, that would be great. And if there's nothing further, let's open it up for public comment. If we, Johanna, is it possible to stop sharing the screen? Thank you. Please come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Ron Montez. Wak she'e Ron Montez. Bucche keh Habenepo'e. My name is Ron Montez. I'm an elder from the Habenepo Tribe, which you know as Mission or Big Valley Rancheria. My questions on this was, I heard a portion of this presentation was to have a cooperative relationship with tribal communities and their involvement in the processes that are in place for the funding to go forward with everyone's recommendation and so on. And I was wondering that in my area of knowledge, I don't know of any relationships that are built, that I know of personally. I, I hear things, and I hear things about structures that bypass a lot of the main tribal input. And it looks good on the outside, but there's a missing component in a lot of those, which I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the perception in our tribal communities is not involvement with you. It is very limited in that place of involvement to access any of the benefits or to have any input into those services or those ways of working with the agricultural community that would benefit our people. The only benefit we have thus far is to work labor, manual labor. And no place do we make decisions on how the walnuts, the grapes, or any of those things are to be handled, or not much information at all on my level. And I'm not sure what is in place because of, I'm just now coming to be aware that this is in place. And so, it's kind of a question for me that maybe after this, you can enlighten me a little bit more on how that would impact our tribal communities? Because we want to be involved from every level so that we have a table, a place at the table to hear and to offer our input and to hear. We are living in a time of trying to make our nation a place of unity and strength that we could move forward as one people. And we need to be included in those decisions and the information that flows so that we can stand with you and you stand with us, so that we can see the same things and encourage one another to make good decisions. That's just my input. I thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Barnes, would you like to respond on what your plan is for that?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for your comment. As a representative of the UC Cooperative Extension, I agree 100%. And I see the same, same thing from the university. And, and the university itself also sees that. They have put forth a, a report called the Land Grab Document, which details the origins of the UC Cooperative Extension System. And by putting this into the county MOU is the first step of what's going to be ongoing outreach with each individual tribe, not necessarily with the goal of advising per se, but listening first and seeing where the collaborations are and, and where our academic advisors and programs can add value for, for each tribe. So, thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your response. And I think that's the value of also having you come and report to the Board where we can ask where we are with that and what's happening, rather than talking about it and then watching it just not ever go anywhere. So.
I agree.
There's no further comments. Let's go ahead and bring you back to the Board and looking for action again with that amendment.
I offer the resolution as amended.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor, oh wait, yeah, we're supervisors.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatia?
Aye. Thank you both.
Aye, thank you, Board.
All right. Glad we were able to get through those. We are now going to our 611 item, 1:30 PM. A. Consideration of a draft response to United States Board on Geographic Names Domestic Names Committee regarding Citizens for Healing's proposal to change the name of Kelseyville to Knokthai. B. Modify and approve the BGN standard recommendation form for submittal with your Board's response. CAO Parker?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Chair. I'm Matthew, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. Matthew Rothstein will be presenting this item, and then your Board will take on the discussion.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. Thank you all for your leadership and persistence today. On Tuesday, July 30, 2024, your Board acted to place countywide Advisory Measure U on the November ballot, asking the following question. Shall the Board of Supervisors recommend approval of the proposal to change the name of the town of Kelseyville to Knokthai? Lake County registered voters opposed the proposal by a margin of 70.58% to 29.42%. Because the vote was advisory in nature, staff prepared the letter attached to your agenda initially with three options. Johanna, are you able to display?
Don't do that.
It's okay. We'll continue, and Johanna will project that as soon as able. Option 1, before your Board would recommend the Board on Geographic Names' Domestic Names Committee reject the proposed name change, adopting the result of Advisory Measure U, while acknowledging some moral questions cannot be answered with a simple yes or no vote. Option 2 would recommend approval of the proposed name change. Option 3 would make no formal recommendation to the Board on Geographic Names, or BGN, for reasons described in the text. And in the time since the agenda and attachments were posted, staff have also prepared an option 4 for your Board's consideration, and it reads as follows. In response to Advisory Measure U, Lake County residents demonstrated clear opposition to the proposed name change. Our Board hereby adopts the result of this vote as the County of Lake's formal recommendation. And while this is ultimately not a County of Lake facilitated process and the BGN will make a determination, a portal has additionally been developed to share public comments received by the county with state and federal naming authorities. This was done to ensure that your voices are represented. We truly appreciate that so many of you have taken time to share your perspectives hundreds over the course of several months. And thank you all for doing that. Now, the county administrative office staff welcomes your Board's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for introducing the item. I will set some parameters for the public comments when we get to public comment, but just to let you know, I, I am planning to give everybody last time I did two minutes, I am going to do three minutes. I want to make sure that everybody has the time. I'm hoping this is the last discussion we have with this. I want to make sure everybody has the time to express themselves fully, and whatever time is needed to ensure that we hear from everybody. I just want everybody to walk away knowing that they've been heard and that we, we, we listened to what you had to say. I do want to open it up for public comment, sorry, for the Board's comments before public comment in case that there's anything that the Board wishes to state.
I'm ready to hear public comment, man.
Supervisor Pyska?
So, I want to start by acknowledging how difficult this year has been on all of us. And we've really been through the wringer. I've spent this year pushing both the federal and state committees to show up and do their part, which they did not. Their lack of support made this process far more difficult and hurt all of us. I also spent this year sitting with and listening to people on all sides of this issue. And I want to thank you. I want to thank everybody that gave me that opportunity. I heard you, and I value your perspective. This process was asked to do the work of healing, yet the application was submitted without the consent of many of the people who are most affected and without the support of the community. The true, the true work of healing comes from the people when all voices are represented, represented and decisions are made together. And this type of work is slow because building trust and listening and showing up takes time. Submitting this application bypassed the opportunity to do this work, and we are stuck in a bureaucratic process, and the final decision will be made by those who will never even come here. We asked the people to participate, and they did. The vote of the people is on record, and it needs to be honored. Our dark and painful history is out in the open now, and how we move forward to reconcile it is up to all of us. This year has changed us and changes hard. Regardless of how we got here, we are growing and we are changing. I have been very clear on my position for years, and I will keep my promise to remain neutral because we have no idea what the final decision will be, and I need to represent all of my constituents. We need to heal together. My commitment is to my community, where everyone is seen, heard, and valued. What is important for me today is that we respect the vote of the people, and I keep my promise to remain neutral. So, I'm offering another option, a little bit different than what you presented. So, here is my suggestion. Our Board is forwarding the vote of the people for, for your committee's consideration, and no further formal recommendation will be made in this federal process.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for that. Just to clarify, so Matthew, I heard in option 4, which I thought was roughly analogous to option 1, and now you submitted language which was different than option 4, I think. So, can you clarify what the option 4 was and how it relates to option 1?
Of course.
And then can you clarify whether that's option 4 is something you were interested in?
So, option 4 was effectively a simplified version in a sense of option 1. There was some language which was redundant with content that appears earlier in the letter, in a sense, or could be argued to be redundant with content earlier in the letter. So, it's a simplified version that says, "In response to Advisory Measure U, Lake County residents demonstrated clear opposition to the proposed name change. Our Board hereby adopts the result of this vote as the County of Lake's formal recommendation." And then Supervisor Pyska's option 5, just read moments ago, is, "Our Board is forwarding the vote of the people for your committee's consideration, and no further formal recommendation will be made in this process."
Any further comments before we open up for public comment? So, I, I want to provide at least some opinion on things, just so that in case public comment comes back, I, I don't want to say these things after the fact, or else you may feel like you have not had the chance to respond. I still feel the exact same way I felt when this first came along, which was actually brought to me about six years ago, I want to say. So, this has been a very long conversation. And in fact, that's just me six years ago. This conversation has been going on for much longer. It's just coming to a head. I, I have changed and have grown, I guess. Maybe for some others, it might be the reverse. Like, I used to think that if you change a name or if you take down a statue, that you're not erasing history. You can't erase what has happened. We know of things that we read in our history books that are gone. And so, history lasts forever in the fact that it's, there, there's, there's stories, there's, there's written documentation of it, whatever the, the case might be to keep that history alive. And, and then I, I thought about it for a while, and, and I decided, maybe I'm wrong. And I have to look at my phone because I want to make sure I say the name right. And I could be wrong, but based on research and conversations, there was a native village in the area of Kelseyville called Habenepo. I hope that's correct, and I hope I say it right. And it was really hard to find that name. And it was really hard to find that name because that name no longer exists. That village no longer exists. And so, it is possible that if we change the name of Kelseyville, that some of that history that comes along with it, whether good or bad, goes with it. And so, my thought process was, I can't fix the past. How do I find ways to solve the future? And I hate what this has done to us because it's put us in a situation of an ultimatum. It's either option A or B. And I think if you always give people an ultimatum, people are going to put up a defensive wall. It doesn't open up for conversation. It doesn't open up for dialogue. You are stuck with the options that are in front of you. I will tell you that I voted no on this when I voted, and I didn't vote no because I don't want to see the name changed. I do want to see the name changed. But I voted no because I don't think it needs to be Knokthai because I don't like how we got to that name, and I don't think it's the appropriate name. And so, my options that I'm looking at originally, because again, I've grown because of things that have happened, is I was hoping that we can end up in a place where we can have a dash in the name like people do in their marriage and call it Kelseyville. I got to say it right, and I apologize. Kelseyville-Habenepo, because the future is both people who have descendants and connections to Kelseyville and people who have connections to our Native American tribes that have been here for 10,000 years. Because we have to move forward. But then we put it on the ballot, which I wish we had not. Because that takes, that takes away from me what I feel are my choices. Because I know what's right in my mind. I think we need to find a way forward, a way together, and option A and B is not necessarily a way together because I have to choose one over the other. I'm not here to choose one over the other. I'm here to figure out how to make our communities better for tomorrow. But with what I expected to be this vote result, which is why I voted against putting it on the ballot, because we, it pretty much mimics the number of letters that we received for and against, so it wasn't necessarily surprising. To tell the people today that their vote doesn't matter, then why do I come back here next Tuesday? There, there's a reason that we're here. There's a reason that we have this democratic process, and if you guys start, stop believing in it because we tell you today we don't care, then I don't know what my purpose is. And I hate it because what's right yesterday has been altered in what I can or can't do today, or else I break a system that I feel greatly about. And so, I hope that some people want to continue the discussion because I think there's a way forward. But the options that I've, that are placed in front of me, I'm hurting inside from what we've done to ourselves and what, what we can do. I'm hurting inside from what we've done to ourselves, and what we can do. I have heard some very racist things in this room, and that is not what we should be hearing when we're talking about ourselves. It's painful. And I don't know what else to say, other than I was really hoping for option C. And I'm going to tell you the truth. I've sat there. Supervisor Pyska was in the meeting with me, and I, in my opinion, the BGN is going to change the name. And I see it in their eyes. I could be wrong, but that's how I see them looking at us. When we're asking them questions about the process, they're looking at us like we're the bigots for trying to question their process, let alone when we're trying to understand their process. We've submitted it before, where we said we wanted to approve Benny Hill over in Middletown, and they rejected that, even though we approved it. So I don't know that our voice is all that truly important to them, versus what they really want to do. But saying yes to a not-chosen community name, saying yes to something that tells one group that you're history, because you moved here in 1950, or 1930, way after the fact of horrendous actions done by a family. People get connected to things. And I don't want to look at either side and say, "Your history is not one that I want to support." And I was really hoping that we can talk about the BGN process without going through an election process, to figure out what is option C. With what we've done, I feel like I would be saying that our democratic values are not worthy, and do not hold here. And that would be destroying exactly what makes us us. And I can't vote against that. And I'm struggling inside. Because we, all in this room, we are the community. No matter how our differences may be in our history, and I say this, and I'm so disconnected, I'm an immigrant. I wasn't even born here. And I wish we would have behaved differently. It's sad. I'm saddened by the decisions we've made that have limited our options of how it is that we can find a way to move forward. I'm saddened by what I've heard in the community. I'm saddened by what we've decided as this board, because we've handcuffed ourselves, in my opinion, to either ruin who we are, or make a bad decision. That's not good choices. We have better choices than this. And with that, I'm going to open up public comment. I want you guys, I'm going to give you the three full minutes, and I will cut you off at three minutes, ask you to please finish your sentence, but I will ask you to stop talking if you keep going. I do not want to hear any kind of hateful rhetoric or speech, as I will reserve the right to ask you to leave the building. This is us representing a community in here, and I want you to respect one another. Please talk to us. It is our decision. It is our doing. So please make sure we talk about the topic, or the Board of Supervisors, and not the individuals within our community. Let's not continue to divide and separate ourselves, please. Uh-oh. Are we good? Do you need us to take a quick break before we start public comment? I apologize, but our technical difficulties are continuing from this morning. And let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and then we will commence with our public comment. All right, I apologize, everybody, for that technical difficulty, but we are back. We hope to keep running smoothly for the rest of this session. And so I left off where I was opening public comment. And let's go ahead and start with the first speaker. If you could please let us know your name, and then you have three minutes. And Johanna will be helping us with that timing. If we have no public comment... And I am going to pause from time to time, to go back and forth, to make sure that those on Zoom don't feel ignored. But I will always come back and make sure everybody gets to say their piece. I just don't want people waiting for a long time when their hands are up.
Hello.
And if you can grab the microphone, and make sure that you speak into the microphone, that would be helpful.
Okay. My name is Carol Costa, and I'm going to go ahead. I want to read the measure again, one more time. Shall the Board of Supervisors recommend approval of the proposal to change the name of the town of Kelseyville to Canocte? Sorry, I'm kind of shaky here. A no vote on this advisory is a measure? A no vote on this advisory measure is a vote against the County of Lake Board of Supervisors recommending approval of the proposal to change the name of the town of Kelseyville to Canocte. As you know, 70.5% of the voters say no. That's the countywide voters. No change to the name of Kelseyville is what you're required to recommend, per measure U, what I just read from the voter's pamphlet. All five of you must honor the results of your constituents' votes. No name change. And if you also, if you count the number of voters that did not vote at all, that brings up the number to 77% of the voters. Okay, that's it.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorna Sides. And I just wanted to note that the people of Lake County have been victims of two very significant acts of collusion and fraud in regards to advisory measure U. The following statement was published in our Lake County Voter Guide. It said, "Changing the name of Kelseyville would involve considerable administrative and financial burdens. The expenses for updating property titles, estate plans, business licenses, rental agreements, and other legal documents would be substantial. The process is time-consuming and complex, causing delays and errors affecting persons and business operations." So this is not true. The title to my home will not need to be changed when the name changes. My driver's license will still be valid, et cetera, et cetera. This was a deliberate fraud upon the voters of Lake County. And that was allowed to go into the voter guide like that. Secondly, if anyone thought that our supervisors were beholden to uphold the will of the majority of Lake County voters, they were scammed. The supervisors are sworn to uphold the U.S. Constitution, which protects the rights of all citizens to be safe from harm. You spoke to this, Bruno, on July 30th. This is what you spoke to exactly, when you spoke in favor of the name change. This is not a popularity contest. This is a chance for the five of you to show leadership, and to uphold the U.S. Constitution, to which you're sworn to, to protect the rights of all citizens of Lake County to be safe from harm. On July 30th of this year, in this very chamber, Beniah Cam Cromwell, chairman of Robinson Rancheria, Pomo Indians, asked for the name to be changed. Flamin McLeod, chairman of Big Valley Rancheria, has repeatedly asked for the name to be changed, even though his stance is causing harm to some children who are getting hurt in this battle. The Pomos were very kind. The Elam tribe said, "Please, yes, you have the permission to use our name to give this beautiful name over to the county, to the community." And the people of the community said, "We don't want this. We'd rather stand up and have a fight, and protect our rights to support this land that we stole, and to protect our little community and its businesses, and the hell with the people who are being hurt." Supervisor Simons...
Your time is up. Your time is up.
... unequivocally that the name change would help the healing.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a comment yet. I just want to have a point-of-order question. The board has indicated that there are two other options.
It seems we have five options currently in front of us.
That's what, two plus the three, that comes up to five. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And the public hasn't seen it. County Council hasn't even seen it. So how are you going to have public input, adequate public input, on something that none of us have actually seen? None of you have seen it. You spoke about it for a minute, and I'm just asking, are you going to still consider those? Because if you are, those need to be made available to the public, and another meeting be held. You can't have it today. You can't vote on any of those if there are substantial changes to any of them. And that's the law.
Thank you for your comment. I do agree that we did put it on the television screen. I think it was very short-lived on the television screen. And I'm hopeful that we are about to go print out some copies of both of those options. We have printed copies. They are in the front. I was not aware of that, or I missed that, if that was stated. So please grab a copy, so that you can review that. And at this moment in time, those options are here. And if there are issues, we'll make sure to check in with County Council before making any decision at the end of the meeting. And at this moment in time, we've heard your comments. We have it printed.
That was a question. It was a comment. It was a question. That was a question, it was a comment, it was a question. Is this, is this the letter that's available? Because are we, are we allowed to take time and not be disrupted by conversation that's going on in order to give this?
So I think we're gonna be having a lot of public comment, and there's gonna be time for people to review it during that, during that time before we vote. So please, if, if the public wants to grab a piece of paper so they can review the options, and I'll be honest, I do not know.
This is not, this is not the new, the new letters.
So I need to take a two-minute break.
Maybe you have to take longer than that.
Two-minute, two-minute break. We'll be back at 2:15. Hello, hello? All right. All right, let's reconvene. Everybody should have all the options. The options that have been provided are not revolutionary in the changes of what's the potential. The Board of Supervisors can always amend contracts or other things on the fly. I wanna make sure you have that in your hands. You have that in your hands. And it should not, there's nothing that's outside of the scope of possibilities at this moment in time, in the sense that they're grounded in what the options already were. They're not all that different than what was already one through three. So you have that in your hands. I do wanna continue with public comment. And I think that we're good to go, and thank you, Wendy, for grabbing more for that. If you were next for public comment, I apologize for interrupting. Please come and introduce yourself, and you get three minutes.
I'm Jerry Brown. It's just making me more nervous standing here. I'm not a public speaker. I have the picture of my grandma and my great-grandma at home in the native dress, so I have no prejudice one way or the other, okay? I'm an American citizen, and we are blessed to be in the United States, to have a voting process. And the people have spoken. And it hurts me to see that five people, and I don't know which individual votes are, would try to subverse, or if they have the right word or not, the vote with the people when they've spoken, and then you try to find a way around it to match what you feel. And I represented, I worked for this county, Lake County, I mean, Kelseyville School District. So I represented the classified staff many times in negotiations. And regardless of my personal opinion, when I went into negotiations with the school district, what my people wanted, I represented. And I spoke for them, even though for a couple of issues once in a while I felt differently. But nobody ever knew that, because I represented the classified staff I was negotiating for with the Board. And so I just say, "Please, we have a constitutional, we've had a vote. Please, listen to the vote of the people." That's what you represent us. You're to find out what we want, regardless of your personal opinion, which I respect, but you must vote how we asked you to vote." And that's my pitch, okay? And Judy Cleveland was one of my very best friends here in Lake County before she died. She would be horrified that this whole thing is going on. I knew her heart, and we talked about the issues many, many times. She was proud that we used to have Kelseyville Indians and the little papooses at the primary school as our mascots, because it was a force of pride for her. And I just feel like this is even dishonoring to her memory. So please, vote how your people voted in the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Green. I just wanted to point out the comments about thinking the BGN has already made up their mind. I have been in back-and-forth contact with them for over a year now, and they've been nothing but professional. I do not get that impression from them at all. And I really do feel like the recommendation you provide to them will be considered greatly. So therefore, I'm asking that you go with the vote and recommend accordingly to what the people in the county wishes are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Virj Blanger. And I wanna, you know, mention that, you know, tasked with informing the people, you know, with information that when it came out onto the, to the voters, it wasn't correct. First of all, there was, it was known about the history with Andrew Kelsey specifically. It was put on plaques, it was put in a lot of books. It was also, you know, known about that there wouldn't be any costs, you know, to people that the changes come from the top down, from Washington down. Also, you know, with, you're tasked with protecting everybody in this county, everybody. Not just, you know, a large part of the county or a large, but everyone. And also, there was, you know, it seems that a lot is, was, the whole vote was based on fear. There were things that were put into, you know, in front of the voters that weren't true, such as just mentioned about all the expenses, such as the history. And, you know, we had input coming, opened out to the community from the very first meeting. We had members of the Kelseyville Business Association that showed up. They knew what was on, what was happening, yet they completely took it like they were blindsided. I agree with Bruno that this should probably go up to the people to vote for a different name, 'cause Conocti being forced, you know, when I said it was open to discussion for over four years, as I mentioned, there were members from the businesses, Kelseyville Business Association at the very first meeting. So a lot of this, the whole thing was based on fear. There was also loads of money that were pushing all of this. And the Citizens for Healing Group just watched. You know, there was a comment made about, "Let's see what the, you know, figures come to see what the racism quotient, how much racism there is in this county." Now, this is interesting, because we're having people that are involved with the community that are okaying what was put for people to vote on. You understand what I'm saying here? That, you know, these things that were known to be untrue were put onto the ballot when questioned, "Oh, that's opinion." When does opinions go for people's votes? I mean, this is something, you're certainly looking for opinion.
And your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Neon Napalm. It's a silent K to begin with, but yes, that is my real name. I changed it in 1993 on purpose. So just so you know that. It was probably one of the most liberating and refreshing things that I've done in my life, and I was really glad to have done it. I just, I'm a little nervous. I can't believe you guys, I can't believe you guys sit in here every day with this, it's so bright in here, and so, there's no, it's stuffy, there's no fresh air. You know, maybe open a little curtain and see some, it's a beautiful December day, some nature in here, some ambiance, if you throw pillows. Maybe that's just me, though, because I'm kinda sensitive. And it has come to my attention that there are a lot of sensitive, quite a few sensitive people in Lake County on either side of this issue. The ones, and we have the, the valued, they worded it, name of Kelseyville, which has come down the pike for a while. And, you know, it's quaint and cute, and they're emotionally, sentimentally attached, in my opinion. So there's that, and the inconvenience of them having to spend money, which if I thought about it any length of time, I would think would be reprehensible in the least of their concerns, because of the inconvenience. I'm sensitive because I, with my light skin and my blue eyes, am a card-carrying federally-recognized, enrolled member of a federally-recognized tribe, Oklahoma Cherokees, that's my mom's family. And I am sensitive to these kind of issues because it offends me. I'm incensed every day when I have to think of somebody else going to school on a school bus that's named after a person who raped and killed their grandparents, or their descendants have to keep going to the same school every day because it happens to be named that, or the same town. My point being, the other sensitive people, I can't even believe it, I can't believe this is the case. It's up, it's not up for discussion. That was really not a very fair vote. In fact, it was a litmus test, in my opinion, of the public opinion. It's not a votable issue. That's why they have a board of geographic names to decide these things. The other sensitive people are on the other side, who don't want to have the name changed. The other people are the ones who are, yeah, it's probably the height of inconvenience, the pinnacle of inconvenience, I would think, to be living in the Wild West and have your daughter of eight raped, taken away by men, grown men, never to be seen again. And if you do your history, you'll know that General Vallejo and Gerald Horasthee and Mr. Kelsey and Stone, you're running a business up and down that highway right there that wasn't a highway then.
And your time is up if you wanna finish your comment.
Of child trafficking, sex trafficking. End of discussion. Anybody that still thinks it's okay to do that, it's reprehensible.
Thank you for your comment. Please, please take a seat. Please take a seat.
Ron Montez, again. I wanted to bring up an issue that is on my heart. A few weeks back, I went to the high school to speak to a high school class on their day of celebrating Indigenous people. And some of my relatives danced, and we had some Indian tacos, some traditional foods. And I got to speak to a class, but before I did that, I spoke to the instructor of that class. And he was very unaware of all of the history that is in Lake County concerning the treatment of the Native people who have been here for thousands of years. And it's not taught in our books, our history books. It is not taught in any of the higher education books unless you go specific and look for something specific. But they'll tell you a lot about the Plains Indians and the different tribes all over the country. But we're talking specifics in this case, because it's my relatives who are we're talking about. Grandfathers, grandmothers, great-grandfathers, grandmothers. And am I not have that same blood in me, but you can find down the line that I'm related to those that do carry that blood. And there was a fear upon our people that has caused such a problem in our psyche and who we are as a people, as a person, that our elders refused to teach us our culture for fear that we would be treated the same way they were. They were in the boarding schools. They were abused physically, sexually, emotionally. They were mistreated. It was against the law of the land for our people to speak our language, or pray, or sing our songs. We could not go to where our food sources were before because there were fences. And if we crossed that fence together, we would be shot with no rec, no way to have it looked at by any law. Because the laws that were there on the books were not for Indian people, they were for the colonial people. And so we had no voice, no, no way to get justice. We had to just take it and sit back and put up with it time and time again. And then when Mr. Kelsey came with Mr. Stone, and they took all of the men from our village site.
And your time is up if you can finish. Thank you.
We had no recourse without being shot, killed, or our wives, or our children taken and sexually abused and murdered. That is what Kelsey means.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
And after the next speaker, I'm going to switch over to Zoom. And after the next speaker, I'm going to switch over to Zoom.
Thank you for taking this up today. You know, Bruno mentioned bad actors. I know there's been some bad actors out there on both sides. You know, we, we really tried to stay as professional as we could on our end, even sometimes overdoing it to try and be transparent. You know, it was, it was mentioned that C4H was the one that fired the first shot in this, what was referred to as a battle or a war. And then the war is being left to the tribes to finish it. And it, it just troubles me inside that I would be, you know, considered at war with you folks. I mean, you guys are doing a great job. Is there tough things? Moke and I go way back and before the smoke settled in the valley fire, we had the first house up. You know, we go back a long ways and I don't want to be at war with the tribes or with the Board of Supervisors, nor does my community. So, you know, we're, we're here to talk, you know, there, there hasn't been much talk. There was no discussion with the community, with business owners, with organizations, Lions Club, Hammers for Hope, Business Association, business owners. This didn't happen. There was no discussion, you know, the consequential, the consequential damages of this, C4H refers to as no big deal. How do they know? It hasn't been done. You know, a, a, a name change of this magnitude is, is rare, super rare. So, how do they, how do they even know what has to be? How do they know what I have to do to change the name of my building? But, you know, I don't want to get into that. Just the, there was no discussion of what the name Conocti would be. There was no discussion of the impacts to businesses. There's no discussion of the harm that's being done to this town, to our community. We haven't talked about that either. At the end of the day, you know, option four, you know, is the best for us. And if the conversation wants to continue, you know, we're there. I'm not going anywhere there. I'll have a seat with anybody and I'll offer a seat, you know, anywhere in Kelseyville, anytime for any of you. If option four can't be done, then I hope option five is, is what maybe is considered today. That's it. I don't want to drag on on other things that people have already mentioned, but thank you very much.
If we could please get your name?
Mark Borgesani, Kelseyville resident.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go to the Zoom room. First hand up is Jim Kamisky. Oh, maybe he put his hand down. Put your, put your hand back up if you wish to speak. There it is, if we can still start with Jim.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Board Chair and the rest of the Board Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to show my respect to the body and our, our county citizens, but I'm self quarantined home sick for the last couple of days. I just want to emphasize, as a resident of Kelseyville, I absolutely see the sensitivity on everything that we've been talking about here today. I do. I, I went through grammar school, high school, worked in Kelseyville, moved away, moved back. And I, I heard what Mr. Montez said too, that, that, that learning process that we need to get back to. This change of the name, wholeheartedly, without any input right now from any of the other affected people is wrong. It was a one-sided shot in the bow and it should not have happened. The Board of Supervisors, you went ahead and put it on the ballot to get it informative. Whether that's completely representative of the whole county or not, I, I don't know. I don't know what the exact thing was, but I think there's other options. Let's take a look at those and let's sit down and have a discussion. But as far as the Board of Supervisors, I would ask the five of you to consider, you're representing the votes that come in, just as I on my elected board don't agree with some stuff that comes in, but when our, our citizens say they want this, it's not my opinion, it's I represent them. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, but I think that we need to be steadfast, represent the vote of the people, and then let the BGN do what they're gonna do with appropriate input from you're all, yourselves, the voters and both sides of this. I want to see this fixed. I love my town so very much and we need to work collaboratively with the tribes and the other folks that I never considered that a big deal when I was younger. I guess it is now. So, I want to work better together and I'll do whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Dwayne Goforth.
Hello. My name's Dwayne Goforth and I'm here to support the name change. I think the first thing I'd like to point out is that the BGN acts under laws enacted by legislators that we elected. They, this law came out in the 1970s and that was part of democracy. And they act under the rules and the laws of the Department of Interior. So, that's democracy right there. The vote was 70% against and 30% for, but that's not all the people. The 17,000 people that voted for does not even near half of Lake County. Young people didn't get to vote and they're going to have to live with the name for a long time. The biggest criteria the BGN uses is whether or not a name is offensive to a significant portion of the population. And even 30% voted for that. So, I think if you look around, you'll find that there is a significant number of people in Lake County who feel the name Kelseyville is offensive. And I'm one of them. And all of the Native people, for sure, they, it's in the blood, in their history, in their families. We, we need to acknowledge that and act to protect the minority and their rights and to go to the future. A, a name is really important. It's our identity, it's our heritage and it's how we see our future. We, the name, if we keep it, represents a past that pretty much none of us are proud of. I want to be proud of the, the name of my town. I love my town. I love the people that's in it, but I want to be proud of the name. And, you know, change happens and when it's for something for good, we should embrace it. It's, it's not always easy. There's a tradition and that can be hard, but, but look around. Mount McKinley was changed to Mount Denali. I don't think anybody's worried about that anymore. Custer Battlefield was renamed Little Big Horn Battlefield to, to give some credit to the Indians that were there. Patrick's Point in Humboldt County was named Sue Meg. There was no controversy about that. Squaw Valley, the ski area in the Sierra was renamed Palisades. I don't, didn't hear a lot of people worried about that problem. Even in Lake County, just last year, Walker Ridge was renamed Condor Ridge. I don't, the people in Spring Valley didn't get upset that their, their local landmark got changed. The name Conocti is a really beautiful name. It has a real meaning. It's been used for thousands of years. And, and just, just think what, what the future will be like. In 10 or 20 years, if the name gets changed, we'll get used to it. We'll be happy, we'll be proud to call our, our town's name named after the gigantic landmark.
And your, your time is up, Dwayne.
Okay, thank you. But, uh,
Thank you.
The issue's not going away if it doesn't get changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Nora. We will do Pamez first. We accidentally clicked on it, on your name.
Are you speaking to Pamela Ezra?
That would be you, yes.
Yes. Hi. I guess I'm speaking with the 70%. I'm a newcomer here, 10 years. And every single day, I'm in a business that welcomes more newcomers coming in from LA, San Francisco, San Jose, Silicon Valley. We're the future. We love Kelseyville. We had no idea, at least I didn't and neither did my husband, that there were problems here about the name or the history. Had no idea there were arguments or any hatred because that's not what I've experienced in the last 10 years. I go to the casinos, the restaurants, I see people, I go out there. We love the name Kelseyville. If you run it, it is the only town in the United States named Kelseyville. Had no idea about these men who are awful, but I did hear that they got their comeuppance. But I don't think there's a step in California that hasn't had blood shed and tears cried into the ground. Imagine renaming from San Diego to LA, San Francisco and Auburn, every single rock tree and place name. I think Kelseyville, as wonderful as it is, it's a wonderful future for all of us here. Nobody that I know is interested in changing the name. I hope that the rest of you, with all of your history, could just put aside that hatred and look around you. And this is new beginnings for us newcomers here. I want to thank you for your time and how hard you're all working on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's go back and try Nora again.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello, my name's Nora Moore. I'm a 10-year Lake County resident, raising my children here as a black woman. I would like to thank the Board for their work. I sat here since nine o'clock. You guys go through a lot of issues, a lot that touched me personally. I'm working in housing in this county, so I'm glad to see that there's movement in that. I was sorry not to hear from the tribal descendant members about this issue, but I'm sure they have their reasons. I'd like to give an alternative option, that we tell the BGN that we plan to change the name in the next five years and that we as a community come together to find a name that works for everybody. But I'm sure that's, that's not something we can actually do, but I think that would actually help. I'm glad to see that the temperature in the room has changed from the last meeting. There were some racist comments that were made. And I'm seeing that a lot of people who before said that they didn't know this was a problem are saying that they now hear people and are willing to work with that. That is amazing and I'm so proud of that. In terms of staying neutral, I'd like to quote Desmond Tutu. If you're neutral in situations of injustice, you've chosen the side of the oppressor. If an elephant has its foot on the tail of the mouse and you say that you're neutral, the mouse will not appreciate your neutrality. The pearl clutching over the process of this being done without meetings or whatever is BS because this has been spoken about for decades. It should have been changed back in the civil rights era when this law was put in place and to ease the conscience of the Board. I'd like to quote our third President of the United States, "In the essence of democracy and majority rule, more of the half the vote of persons participating in the election. However, the constitutional democracy in our time requires a majority rule with minority rights." And in those rights, we're talking about the constitutional right to pursue life, liberty and justice. And I believe the pursuit of happiness here is being stifled for our local tribes. Jefferson goes on to say that, "All will bear in mind the sacred principle that though the will of the majority is in all cases to prevail, that will will be rightful, must be reasonable, and that the minority possess their equal rights, which equal law must protect and to violate would be oppression." James Balfer goes on to say, "The tyranny of majorities may be as bad as the tyranny of kings." So, if you need any reason to not go with the majority vote, of which I think was a fraudulent vote as it was presented to the people and given such a short time in which we couldn't educate the people. Here it is. You're protecting the rights of a minority in this county who have been infringed upon by having someone who has raped and pillaged and basically committed the Holocaust on this side of the United States during the gold rush on our local tribal people. Let me remind you that five tribes have written to the BGN, seven tribes have verbally approved of the change. And the NCAA, AI, days before the election, actually approved support of all our tribes in this name change. That's hundreds of tribes across this nation that support our tribes. So, if there's any reason to go against the majority.
Your time is up if you can finish your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So, I have no further hands up. I do have some of the hands of those who have already spoken. I just don't think they put their hands down. If you could please clear that up, that'd be easier for me. But I want to make sure to come back to the room. Is there any more public comment? Please come on up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Eileen Anderson. I live in Middletown. I've been a resident of Middletown for a little over 28 years. I want to start by saying, I resent the implication that I'm a racist because I disagree with changing the name of Kelseyville. I am not a racist. My last name growing up was Garcia. I worked the vineyards, I picked the prunes. I've experienced racism. Racism is everywhere. There's, all races are racist in one way or another. So, you know, there's no perfect race. That's my first point. Second point is, we're a representative republic. You are representatives of us, we the people. We hired you when we voted for you. 70% of the people said, "We like the name Kelseyville." Every race has, America has started on a, on a bad note, some would say. We've had slavery. The blacks want reparations. The Japanese internment camps during World War II. The Native American population, I respect, but they are not as pure as the wind driven snow. There were tribal wars and stuff like that. We have, our history is dirty, but we've changed. America has turned the corner. We're moving on to new things. If you're gonna let racism or the hurts that you felt growing up define you as a culture and as a people, we're not moving forward. We need to move forward. Yeah, I don't know that much about Mr. Kelsey and Mr. Stone did bad things. So did the slave owners, so did the slaveholders. And if we're just gonna be beholden to the atrocities of our past, we will never move forward as a nation. We need to unite. You know, Kelsey was bad. The town, the, most of the people don't even know what's went on back there. And we respect, we respect the hurt of the people, but we're not gonna live and dwell in that. We're gonna move forward, accept the hurt, move on to the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please. And if, if we can keep the comments out of, that it's, I would like that you are respected when you are in the microphone and that in return, there's respect given to others on the microphone as well. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelvin Reed and I live in 95451. And we all know what that is. I'm gonna give you a little different perspective. Dakau, Buchanau, Auschwitz, they all still exist. You know why they exist? They exist because the people don't ever want to forget what happened to them.
Can you speak to the Board of Supervisors, please?
So, I want, you should honor the vote, number one. I understand that there's bad feelings, there's lots of bad feelings, you know? We can, we can go on and on. You know, Jefferson was a slave owner, Washington was a slave owner. We can go on and on and on. What are we gonna do, change every name? It's not about that. No, it's not. It's, it's your history. You can't bury your history lest you're doomed to repeat it. Okay? And that's why the Germans keep all of those concentration camps there for visitors to see so people never forget what happened. There's a purpose for it. And I will be visiting one of those concentration camps in four months. Why? Because I don't want to ever forget. My grandfather was forced to drive a German general around because he was a race car driver during World War II. Forced to. It was either that or he was in the concentration camp, just like everybody else. So, I have history. I know what I'm talking about here. Don't bury the past. Don't. We shouldn't be doing that. We need to remember it so that we learn from it. Don't. We shouldn't be doing that. We need to remember it so that we learn from it, like a point that somebody brought, one of you brought up earlier. You know, you couldn't even find where it was anymore, is when you went trying to find it in the history. It was gone. It evaporated. Out of sight, out of mind. We can't do that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Kyle Bill. I do agree that there was an injustice done. The place of Habeinapo should never have been renamed to Kelseyville. Today, all of you are presented with a decision of profound moral significance. As an indigenous person and a voice for those that cannot speak here today because of genocide, I come before you to speak on the matter that transcends the mere renaming of a town. It's about righting a wrong of our collective history and taking a step towards healing and deep wounds inflicted on our people. The name Kelseyville is a constant reminder of a violent legacy of Andrew Kelsey and Charles Stone, whose actions toward our ancestors are one of cruelty and injustice. This name embedded in our community continues to honor a past that has inflicted tremendous suffering on indigenous people. You must ask yourself, is this the legacy I choose to uphold? Is this the story I choose to tell the world about who we are as a community? You have the responsibility to change the narrative and to demonstrate that we, as a collective community, stand for truth and reconciliation. By changing the name to Canocta, we honor the original stewards of this land, and we acknowledge the true history and that we begin to heal the rifts of the past. This is not merely about altering the signs of a town's border. It's about affirming our commitment to justice and respect for all cultures and histories. As you consider the options before you, I truly urge you to think about the message that we will send to our children and to the world. Let us show that Lake County leads with courage and justice. I implore you to make a moral choice and stand on the right side of history and to vote for a change that will stand-- that will start mending wounds of the past. Let us move forward together, not just as neighbors, but as united communities dedicated to justice and moral respect. And I just want to say that I appreciate this process, because it shows, it gives me the opportunity, the opportunity to see each of your hearts and where you are, because there's a difference between being an ally and being a true ally or just being a performative ally. And so this is your moment to understand that the choices that you make will go into the history books and that we will remember the choices that you made. So today is a beautiful day because we get to see all of our hearts today and who we stand by and who we support. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Barbara Hollenkamp, and I live in Kelseyville. I was here in July, and before I say what I want to say, I find it hard to believe that we cannot use profanity, but yet the Board of Supervisors could when we met in July. That was uncalled for. I'm here because the vote was really seventy, almost 71% for, against changing the name. I think you have an obligation legally and morally to go forward with that. Why vote if you're not going to accept what the vote was? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. After this next individual in the room, I'm gonna go to a hand that's been waiting in the Zoom.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I haven't met our county council yet, and who would that be?
Lloyd Guintivano, but please continue your comment.
Okay. I'm very concerned, and also in the future, that statements that were made on the ballot that were so incorrect, they were so out of line, and our county council did not see fit to correct those injustices, I will call them. Okay? I hope this doesn't happen in the future. Supervisor Simon, you called it when we had the last meeting here. You said, "I think I know how this is gonna go." And you were right. But I think that some of the statements that were on the ballot may have had a big influence on how this went. Okay? Also, what's wrong with Canocta? I know that there's been a lot of brand work on the name Kelseyville. However, Canocta has a built-in reputation from Canocta Harbor that is not local, it's not state, it's not national, it's even international. This is a very good name to change this town to. And one other thing, let me ask you something. If you went on a vacation, you came back, and all of your family was dead, and the guy that killed them, they named the town after him, how would you feel? The name of Kelseyville is a slap in the face to all of our tribal brothers and sisters. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're gonna go to Zoom. We have Katie Ray.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you try again? It wasn't very clear.
Okay, hold on one second.
It's perfect.
Okay. Nishan Nishan, Shakaya Shakaya, Katie Ray Shabosha, Nomalaki is Keta, Wailaki is Keta, Wintun is Keta. Good afternoon, esteemed board and community members. I'm apologizing first that I'm not there. I'm in Southern California at a conference, otherwise I would. During this process, I have had the opportunity to speak with members from both sides. I have, of course, been able to speak with many of our tribal members, community members, and a number of our youth, which, if I were at home, I would have youth there today. One of the things that I keep hearing is that we don't want to change the name and erase the history. Unfortunately, for many years, our history is not taught. Like many have said, you can't find our history in the history books. We don't learn about it in school. Starting next year, we will be learning about this in ninth grade. This will not be forgotten. It will no longer be erased, as it is now going to be a part of the curriculum and a graduation requirement for our youth to go through ethnic studies. Thankfully, our Board of Supervisors, the six of them in Lake County, decided not to use the California CAMHS curriculum, but to have us create curriculum to be taught about the local history. One of those components is going to be the Bloody Island massacre. So they will be learning about Kelsey and Stone and everything that happened to the tribes within the community. One of the things that really bothers me is that this was not brought up by any of the tribes, but we're now the ones that are fighting this fight, like it's been said. And a thing that I see from a lot of the work that I do in Lake County is the lack of diversity. We need to remember that accessibility is being able to get in the building. Diversity is getting invited to the table. Inclusion is having a voice at the table, and belonging is having your voice heard at the table. We need to make sure that while we're in this process, that yes, we listen to both sides, that we remember that we want healing and not to destroy what we're trying to do here. This has been very hard for a lot of us, being brown, living in Kelseyville, working in Kelseyville, having my kids in Kelseyville. It has not been an easy year. I can tell you that. But I still go to fundraisers. I still go to board meetings. I still go to a lot of things and sit across the table with people that oppose what I like, what I need for healing. And I'm going to continue to do that because I want to see change. So we need to figure out how to do this to where it doesn't demolish everything that we have, because the community and the community events and the community ties are amazing in a small town such as Kville. So if we can come together and figure something out for all of us, rather than being dictated on what we should do, I think it would be best. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the chamber wish to speak? Please come on up. I have no more further hands in Zoom at this moment.
If we were in the--John Costa, if we were in the US Senate, 71% would be filibuster-proof. It would be law. But there's a fifth option that none of you have thought of. If you don't want to do the people's bidding, resign. Your jobs are to do what the people want. We took a vote. Think about the damage that will be done if you don't follow the vote. Why should we vote? Ask yourselves, why should we vote if you're not gonna follow it? I understand that you didn't want it on the ballot, but someone told me a long time ago, reality always wins. The reality of it is, it was on the ballot. The reality of it is, almost 71% said no. You're not gonna change that. So you can either accept it or come up with an excuse and say, voting doesn't matter. Voting doesn't matter. So then why do you matter? Have a good day.
Thank you for your comment.
My name's James Tavoris Robello. My great-grandfathers were Juan Pedro de Silva, Juan Tavoris Robello, Matthew Tean, and Jonathan Coram, Jewish. You have been elected to serve in our county to represent us. We're a country of laws, somebody mentioned earlier. The laws are supposed to be produced of the people, by the people, and for the people. And we're speaking for the people right now. Passing along to this organization that is set up to create these changes, what are they gonna do with San Francisco, Fremont, Stockton, San Jose, Santa Clara, Santa Rosa? Those are all non-native. They're not geographic, but they're accepted, and I don't think they're gonna get changed. They have much more pull than we have. They're much larger than we are. Do your business. Do what you wanted to do. You chose to have the whole county vote. You could have chosen to have less people vote, but everybody got to vote. And as they pointed out over and over, 71% voted to keep the name. There's a lot of history that all of us have, baggage that comes along. I hear Stone and Kelsey being thrown out and thrown out. I believe they died at the hands of the tribal people. Okay? I hear stories that sound impossible to me, that these two men would hold these, all these tribes as slaves. How did they do it? How did they take all these people and drag them up to the mines to dig for gold? How do they do these things? How do they do any kind of business? Before them were the Valleos. Before that, there were the various missions around. They all have bad sides. Do your job.
Thank you for your comment.
Alan Fletcher, Citizens for Healing. When we started the process, Lona Sue and the like, we involved tribal people who advised us. And Ron Montez Senior, behind me, got approval from elders of all seven tribes before we filed our proposal with the BGN. We held a meeting in the Habamatalel Hall in Upper Lake, and nobody--the tribal members who attended said, "Thank you for doing this." They said they appreciate it. It was the first time they've been invited to sit at the table. And that was approval we got before we filed with the BGN. In terms of consulting with local people, we held a series of meetings around the lake, kicking off as close to Kelseyville as we could in Big Valley Hall. We publicly announced that we were proposing the name Canocta. When opponents came to one other meeting and they said, "What name would you like?" They said, "Kelseyville, Kelseyville, Kelseyville." They refused to even consider another name. The ballot is a sledgehammer, and the nut is totally cracked. It was written, so somebody just reading it had no idea why the proposal was to change the name, because it's offensive. That wasn't on the ballot. It was just, shall we change the name, yes or no? Not who by, not who to, not why, not nothing. I'm surprised we even got 30%. We did have two precincts, and we got over 50% yes. Only 200 voters or so between them, but we did it. Now, what if the vote had been 3% yes? If only the Native Americans had voted yes and everybody else voted no? If the vote had been 3% yes and 97% no, would that have made the name not offensive to the 3%? You issued a proclamation back in February of 2021, saying the county supports respect. Is it respectful to those 3% to insist that they have to endure this offensive? Andy Kelsey raped murdered children. Ben Kelsey shot Indians in the street. Those are the people that the name Kelsey talks to. Once you know the history, they were evil people. It's a horrible name. It's a terrible brand. I think Canocta 95451 will thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Flamin McLeod, tribal chairman in Big Valley Rancheria. On the ballot, you've seen my name for the argument. That wasn't, I didn't write that statement alone. That was information and input from all local six tribes of Lake County. It just happened to have my name on it. Forgetting. I was debating on whether to come up here and talk, because whatever's gonna happen is gonna happen, right? Here, right? But I'm compelled because I got people that are behind me. My ancestors, my grandmothers, and my aunts and uncles, just like you two up there, right? And so for some of you, I know you have a little bit of confusion going on, because you have that push, then you have your conscience too of the position that you hold. I don't admire it, right? You know, with this name change, right? Whether it goes forward or it doesn't, right? I'll let you two know right now, right? From those times till now, we're still here. We grow. We're a part of this community, and we'll keep growing. We'll keep thriving. One thing that I thought of is, I want to thank our champions that help our people. Katie Ray, Kyle Bill, Nancy, all these people that help, allies if you call them, right? Some are native, some are not, right? And whether they know the stuff that we go through or not, you know, they're still there to help our people. They see the stuff that we suffer, right? And it's things that we'll continue to go through on in time, whatever, right? My job as a tribal leader is to help my people progress, protect my people, and do what I can to make them more fortunate and better in the future, my, our children, right? Because I'm not worried about me, right? I'm worried about where we're going in the future, what we have to endure. And all the things that we've endured in the past, our ancestors, all of that, we're still here. I'll tell you that again. We're still here, right? I respect and appreciate how the vote went, right? That's how the people spoke. You hit it on the head, right? You said about 30%. I admire the things you say, man, because you say it from the heart. You say what you feel, and you don't care who gets hurt, right? Because it's the truth for you, right? You know, like I said, whether it changes or it stays, right? We're gonna keep thriving, right? That's what we do as native people, right? And again, I respect what they said. They're saying that, you know, you guys were put in these positions with votes, right? But back in July 30th, right? They wanted you guys to have a put to a vote to the county and not respect that you were put there through votes, right? And now that it's coming back here, it's respect the vote of the county, not your guys' decision. It's very confusing for me, right? And like I said, I have people that stand behind me, right? And I didn't want to do a disservice to my ancestors and not come up here and speak, right? We'll carry forward. We'll be very progressive, but thank you, guys. We'll carry forward. We'll be very progressive. But thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comment.
So Rob Brown, Kelseyville. In true tradition, I'll probably end up pissing both sides off, but here we go. I'm more interested in the integrity of the process and this Board of Supervisors. I have a lot invested in that, and I think the board needs to... First of all, I don't think the election should have taken place to begin with. It was a waste of money, and it's just an advisory. I think efforts could be spent in other areas. And I'll tell you an example of that. I've talked to EJ about this. This conversation, all of this time, all of this money, everything that's been spent, would have been much better spent on something that my wife Angela and I have witnessed over the last several years as we travel over the United States. And we go to a lot of different cultural centers, Native American cultural centers throughout the United States and Southwest mostly, but they're unbelievable. And that's what we lack here in Lake County. We have a lot to offer with that. I'd like to be a part of that, even though, you know, I'm native to Kelseyville, but I'm not native in the same sense that you would speak to here. But the county has a ton of land. They could donate to that and some of these different parks. A lot could be spent on that, and I think that would be a positive approach towards healing or whatever that looks like, whatever... I'm a little too old to be using this feel-good stuff, but you know what I mean. The... But the board, and I... This is where I piss off the side that I'm probably going to be on, but the board's obligation is not to vote for what the majority said, because here, you're looking at a guy who voted against every dope grower in the county, even though the votes, it was passed, made legal in Lake County and the state of California. You vote how you, what you feel is right. If we voted, if the majority could determine what was right or wrong, we'd still have slavery. So I think the board still, and this is, you know, trying to have the board give the board an opportunity to maintain its integrity as what the board is really about. You got to vote with how you feel, not with some advisory nonsense vote that probably shouldn't have taken place to begin with. I think you should keep the name, but I don't think it's because of... It was actually seventy-five point seven percent in District Five and in Kelseyville where the vote was. But I still want to see the board do the right thing based on their heart, not based on some public opinion poll, basically is what this was. But I also want to say, Jessica, with all due respect, neutrality is not leadership.
Thank you for your comment. And then I'm going to jump back to Zoom. We've had a hand waiting for a while.
Hello, Helen Owen, Middletown. And I feel that when I was running for supervisor for District One, I'll be taking Moak's position.
If you can please speak to the board.
Sorry. One of the things I had brought up, I had went, I had the honor of going to the very first Native American forum in Lake County. And one of the things I brought up at that point was that there's more than one way to skin a cat, basically. I think that we are missing the culture that Rob had just mentioned. And that's something I would really like to see coupled with Kelseyville. I believe that we, there's a number, obviously, of people that want to keep that name. But at the same time, I would love to see something good come out of it. Natives, I've always looked, you know, up to them and had a great deal of respect for the native culture. And I think we're missing an opportunity here to showcase our native culture in this area. And I think that something could be built around it that was positive, that would bring our... That would bring revenue and education to Lake County and be a centerpiece and be able to bring your culture to the forefront here and not just go back a hundred and fifty years, but go back thousands of years and share that and use it for education and come up with some type of museum or something around all of this, I think would be phenomenal, and I think it could do just. And somebody had mentioned the Little Big Horn and Custer's Last Stand. Well, they're kind of combined. You look up Custer's Last Stand, and it was actually at the Little Big Horn. So they've used both of them to bring that together. And I think that we're kind of missing an opportunity here to make lemonades out of lemons. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Zoom. We have Ariel. There we go.
All right, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
I don't know how to lower the hand. You would think that I would have learned that over all these years through the pandemic. But at any rate, I have started my stopwatch, because I only get three minutes, and I don't want to take too much time. But I think it's educational over at the... Oh, by the way, I'm with the Lake County Record Bureau. I also have a program at KPofZ, as probably many of you know. But all my reading on this issue, I have not really had the opportunity... And I think it might be beneficial for the public to hear from the safe Kelseyville side. I know the speakers have talked about Mr. Mark Borgghesani has talked about how, and I'm sorry if I butchered that name, but has talked about how difficult it would be, how expensive it would be to change the name. But there's no hard data that I've seen on that. I mean, have they ran the numbers? How much would it cost? I mean, and he's a big business person in this community. How expensive would it be? How difficult would it be? That type of information has been missing. And just for my own edification and education, I would like to know that part of the story. And I'm sure a lot of people out there in the public would probably benefit from hearing that. It's a strange world that we are in now, where I live in District Five and am a proud Lake County resident, as well as a member of the media, local media. But it's a strange world that we're living now, where I agree with some of the comments made by former supervisor, District Five Supervisor Rob Brown. But be that as it may, I think it's going to be educational if we get that part of the story. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's all the hands that I have in Zoom at this moment, so I'm coming back to the chamber. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? If you've already spoken, I would like...
Right. I spoke to Matt Rothstein, and he suggested...
Hold on. If you've already spoken, we have individuals who have not spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Okay. He told me to come up last and present my option number six. Thank you.
So I'd just like to allow the elder to go if she has a prepared statement. And I'll reserve my time after she's done.
So we came in today with three options. Now we're up to five options. According to the U.S. Board on Geographic Names, that they're going to be... When they sit down to make their decision, they're going to have, they're going to have three options. Option number one is to keep the name Kelseyville. Option number two is to change the name to Kelseyville, from Kelseyville to Canocti. And option number three is to agree that the name of Kelseyville is offensive and then send it back to the community to decide on another name. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name's Butsalon Brown. I'm a member of the Lem Pomo tribe in Clinic Oaks. And I have a statement I'm going to read and also a few comments I want to make as this name change has progressed. So first, I want to say that Americans have to stop loving all its killers. Americans need to stop borrowing its killers by naming universities, cities, towns, institutions, and streets in their names. Unfortunately for the tribal people and the original owners of this land, and any potential equity created by the name change feels like oppression to the European-American collective of Kelseyville and Lake County. When equity feels like oppression, this is a clear sign of unbalanced power and dynamics that support the erasure, minimization, pain, and trauma created by the Kelseys and the name Kelseyville. This name has perpetuated by the people of Kelseyville today, as seen and heard over the previous months in dialogue, at open hearings, sidebars. Today, it's still of no concern to the people who don't share our lived experience with the name of Kelseyville and all that comes with it. Tribal people's American experience to this time in history has been, for the most part, a continued nightmare. And we need to understand that nightmare by having these dialogues and looking into our history. Tribal people have survived and lived through the sanctioned genocide policies of twenty-four United States presidents and more than five hundred years of American settler violence. Well documented. The European founding fathers created a country based on a system of white supremacy, racism, and colonization at the cost of indigenous peoples of the Western Hemisphere. This is the legacy that United States America has left to us, all the people here. With that statement being said, there is much truth in that statement. We might not all agree on the words in that statement, but the situation is that we have to come together as a community and a people. I've had a few dialogues with Kelseyville citizens who got to hear directly from my mouth my concerns with the name of Kelseyville. And productive dialogue happened. And one of the things that the Citizens for Healing did was create an opportunity to have a dialogue that is currently happening with some levels of our community. And there is a way forward. There's a way forward for us to learn about what has happened here. One of the things that I think is important is when we talk about erasure, the place names that were changed. When the Kelseys arrived, that name would have never changed if they didn't kill all the people they killed. So we have to look at that balance and what took place. We like to dismiss it because for some of us, it happened so long ago. But for many of us, that's just two generations away. And so we have to understand these dynamics and create a solution. I heard on the way over here, former supervisor Brown, talk about a cultural center. That's an important step to talking about the history. That's an important step to informing our community of what has happened here. And until we do that, there's always going to be this dialogue of who's right, who's wrong.
And your three minutes are up.
And all the things that come with it. So I'd just like to say in ending that dialogue needs to continue. And also, as the owner of Kelseyville number said, I would like to be involved in that dialogue as it moves forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I see no one getting up in the chamber. If you have another comment to make, I will go ahead and take your second comments. I do have another one from a second as well in Facebook, Zoom. If we can keep it to one minute, since this is your second time coming up, I'd like to...
I'll take as many minutes as you will allow me. It seems, it appears to me now that I've heard all this dialogue that it really is, there's a giant gap of uneducation. These guys think they actually voted on something. And actually, to dovetail off what the gentleman said, who's on the other side of what I believe in, he said that it was a public opinion survey, and it actually was, like a litmus test, like a pulse to see how many people are paying attention in this county. Has nothing to do with registered voters or how many actually got, took us out and voted. What it has to do with is that the wording on that, I voted, okay? I'm a registered voter. I'm a card-carrying registered voter. Okay? And that dialogue was completely slanted. Hey, they've decided already, so why would I not go with the majority if I'm uneducated or ignorant in the truest sense of the word, not knowing the story? Because in me, it's black and white. There are two sides to this. If they know about it and they're educated, they're sure as hell not going to want to be named a town after it, like he said. If they're uneducated and they're ignorant of the facts...
Please finish.
Then they are going to be a cheerleader for a ridiculous cause, which is reprehensible.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Nora on Zoom. We're done at this point. We're done at this point. If we can get Nora on Zoom for a final comment. Again, please keep it to one minute.
Absolutely. Real quick, I would just like to stand by Lorna on that option that was not discussed, that we tell the BGN, we would like to change the name as a community, but we'd like a chance for us to come together and find a name that we could all work with. I think that seems to be, from all the comments, the most amicable decision that will allow more education, allow more conversation amongst people. I think we've actually come really far since earlier this year, and it's really great to see. So thank you again, Lorna, for stepping in. I know you've taken a lot of heat for this.
Thank you for your comment. So I'm going to close down public comment at this point. Actually, I'll make one last call. Any further public comments before I shut it down? Okay, so there are still more. You don't stand up and line up. I don't know.
Ida Morrison, Hapemato Pomo of Upper Lake, Executive Council Member at Large. It is hard to be a Native American today, as it hasn't really changed. When you talk about this is history, it's not history. The mentality still goes on today. There is still racism. I experienced it myself. I sat in a restaurant, a gentleman is telling me that all my people do is get drunk all day long, live in dirty homes, live off their parents. I have no parents. I rent. I go to school. I have an education. He told me I was uneducated. I hold AA. I'm a single mom. I'm raising my child by myself. It is not done. It's not over. It continues. That name continues to bear the mentality that was done a long time ago. That's not considered. You guys tell us to get over it? How do you get over something like that? You can't get over that. It's historical trauma. It's trauma that our kids will carry. My kid's going to carry that. His kid is going to carry that. He's my second generation. I got seven, five other that I need to worry about in my time. And in my time being here on earth and being a tribal leader, I need to speak for them. He's here. I pulled him out of school so he could be here. So he's sitting here listening to all of this, and he's going to grow up understanding what this board is for and their decisions that they make. And like Kyle said, your guys' hearts. Your actions here today and your lack thereof, and your decisions and lack thereof are speaking louder than what you are not saying. And he's going to know that. Your job is not to be liked. I sit on my council. My job isn't to be liked. My job's to make the right decisions for my people and to make sure that what I do, the business that I conduct, better serves their life. And that is your job.
Thank you for your comment. I believe there was more. Yeah.
Hi, Mary Morris, Kelseyville resident. A lot of us do recognize the horrible things that have happened in the past. Unfortunately, we can't change that. We also don't want to forget it. I really like the idea of the cultural center, which I think is way past overdue. What I would like to say is, one person commented that there's not, it's not that big a deal to change the name for people. Our Kelseyville community is a huge amount of senior citizens, a large amount of them on social security, so very limited income. It's like moving them to another town, because they have to change everything. All of their bills, all of their documents. It all has to be changed. Excuse me. Yes, they do. If someone sends something to the town of Kelseyville through the postal service, which they have told us, we have six months to change the name, or they reject the mail. And that's, call the post office. That's a fact. So what I'm saying is, we do recognize the pain, and I feel for everybody in here that has dealt with that. I don't know how they feel. We've all had issues in our lives, but that's not the point right now. So my point is just very simple. To me, the worst damage is going to be done to our elders, no matter what nationality they are. Eleven percent of Kelseyville is Native American, and that came out in the 2020 census, which is actually the highest number around the lake of natives. We have a very large... This is going to be a hardship on all of them. And I ask you to just consider really how much healing. I think there's better ways to heal than to change the name. None of us are proud of that. The man that they named just... None of us are proud of that. The man that they named just the first settler, that's why it was named. It wasn't after him, it was after the first settler. We're not proud of that. And we're the first ones to tell people. You know, that monument makes him sound like he was this great. He was not. He was a horrible man. He deserved to die, as did Stone. But we can move on in a more positive way. And I just think of our seniors and that's my biggest concern. Is how, and I've been told by a lot of the natives, well, then you need to go take care of it for them. I own a business. I can't be running around to people that don't know me for them to give me their personal private information. So I'm asking you to please consider the bigger picture than just healing, which healing is so important. I agree. But it's not the whole picture because this is gonna be very wounding to many, many people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else in the board chamber that wishes to make a public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Frances Ford. I live in Lake County. I live in the Kelseyville area. I've been there not as long as some and longer than some others. I'm here to um just ask that you remember the na- the words you said in July that would maybe create the hope that you would make a um an agenda for the BGN. There were several of you that said that you would love to see it changed. And I would hope that if you can't do it together, you would do it separately as yourselves, as uh citizens of yourselves. I don't know what y'all think, what you think about Kelseyville or why. But um I feel like I was lied to again. And I've read a lot of information about um the natives and the things that they've been promised and the things that they've lived through. And I feel like it was just another lie, putting it on the, the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to make a comment, sir?
Please.
Come on up to the microphone. I know that somebody offered some help and he said he was. Thank you, Kevin.
Good afternoon. My name is Frances William Howland. I live in that alleged town. I hope that by the time you people reach my age, that you have something better to do with your time than to try to try to convince people that the human part of humanity has a meaning. Now, I know that's, that's a tough question. However, I think that uh, I think you will all do the right thing. Which would probably be changing the name of that town. To anything, anything but Andrew. I mean, the guy was a devil. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
One minute.
Just a couple of seconds. I disagree with, with the lady said earlier about the mail. As long as you put the zip code on it, it doesn't matter what it says, it will go through. That's all there is to it.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment before I close down public comment? And so you've already spoken, so one minute.
Just a few seconds in that. Uh you know, I, I want to mention that uh you know, the information that was put out you know, onto the ballot wasn't correct. And it says there was some involvement with the uh, you know, supervisors and everybody on crafting this. That, that be considered. And also, you know, the changes come from the top down. So everything changes. Then people don't have to change the names of their businesses. They don't have to go to the DMV for their licenses or for their deeds or wills. Everything's done from the top down and that's it. That's how it's done.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? I'm gonna head and close public comment. I do see that we have a hand in Zoom, but I've already provided a, a second attempt for the uh comments. So I'm gonna shut that down as well. Bring it back to the board uh for either deliberation or action. And Supervisor Simon. Vice Chair Crandall, thank you.
When folks come up and just constantly pile on top and pile on top. I think that's where this starts, being right, being wrong, being um tit for tat. What really hits me today that I appreciate is from many people here is education. Let's come to the table and talk. I think that's a great thing to hear and I think that's the right direction as well. I like what Chairman had said uh from Big Valley. Lehman had said is that we're gonna be here regardless, and that goes for everybody. No one's going to leave. I know at times there's been people that have come on and told people to go somewhere or do this or do. No one's going to leave. That's, that's not what's going to happen. So I'll, I'll start with that because I didn't write that or prepare that, but that's just what, what I'm feeling right now. I do also want to uh, you know, give appreciation to people that have taken time to come here to write comments in a tactful and respectful way. I think that's very important because there's been a lot that weren't. And it's, it, it makes it hard to not be personal when you're sitting here or even in general. You know, I feel like uh this issue was thrust it among all of us, amongst all of us, uh by this submittal to change to Canocti and no other name. There were tribal historic officers and other tribal folks that have stated that should have been deferred to the local tribe for what name that they felt it should be or what historically is connected to that. In fact, the actual name of that town since time immemorial before this was called Honopati, which means Fire Village. And a tribal historic preservation officer had taught me that and showed me that. This issue has been dormant since the mascot change of 2008. With this, the tribal people have had to get on board with what's been pushed without a lot of tribal input. And I know they said there was elders. They said they had comments from elders. But the fact that there was no tribal leadership that in, uh imposed anything or had that option. When I was speaking with uh, someone had said they tried to do that but didn't know how. Now that's like a lack of due diligence. And it feels like that that was done as uh imposition to say, well, we know that the natives listen to their elders, so let's just go here. It's another move to win, right? That's frustrating. In a situation as sensitive and as divisive as this, you want to take that due diligence and do proper protocols and actually collaborate with everyone in general to make sure. There are statements, you know, and, and I only say this for educational purposes, so I'm not saying this to win. But there are statements that it wasn't named after Andrew Kelsey. But according to the Napa County Historical Society, as Lake County was previously part of Napa County, the entry listed as Napa County's Uncle Sam Mountain quoted, "After Lake County was established in 1861, Uncle Sam was referred to as Kelsey Creek or Kelsey. And in 1882, the Uncle Sam Post Office became Kelseyville Post Office, reflecting official renaming of the town in memory of Andrew Kelsey on October 4th of that year. Uncle Sam Precinct is found on the ni- 1892 official map of Lake County, as is the Uncle Sam School District. But by 1907, Uncle Sam School had become Kelseyville Grammar School and the name Uncle Sam Mountain was drifted into history." And I also say that his remains were also exhumed and buried under this monument. There's also statements that you can't change history. Yet it was changed from Honopati to Uncle Sam, then to Kelseyville. So the previous history since time immemorial was already erased as well. I'd like to add one more thing because I was misquoted in an article by the media stating that I was talking about native people, which I wasn't. I was talking about the land spanning from around Bottle Rock Road area to Elk Mountain, all the way to Glen Haven, would have been the reservation for the Lake County tribes had the Treaty of Lupiomiya been ratified. This area would be a reservation and the tribes would be there. So this wouldn't even be a topic of discussion had that been ratified and honored. So I'd like to also note that there was a res- resolution attached unanimously supported by the National Congress of American Indians, which consists of 574 federally recognized tribes in the nation to support uh a name change. I don't feel this was a waste of time with the advisory vote or a waste of resources. The vote does matter with history in mind when our great grandchildren, great, great grandchildren look back on the town being named after Andrew Kelsey and wonder, why would we do this? They'll look back and see where at least I know where I stood in light of many threats, ridicule and shame. Which, you know, I still value your voice regardless. I know that it doesn't feel like it, but I do. I respect it and I hold no ill will. This is just the subject that we have and this is an opinion that we have and it's very close to all of us. Out of respect for my colleagues, I went with the advisory vote. And I struggled with that, if you didn't notice. I had an opportunity to end this discussion at that time. So in fact, uh despite the decision today and despite the decision of the Board of Geographical Names, it will not end here. We do not change this. The Board of Geographical Names does. And then from there, where does it go? Because it's gonna keep going somewhere. That's why I really like the talk of education. Lastly, I'd just like to highlight, someone had said that I should not vote because I'm native. You know, wow. Imagine if all votes were based off of ethnicity. So I, you know, I just would like to say that I appreciate your comments. Regardless, this is a tough discussion, but it's not going anywhere regardless. We are gonna have to still live amongst each other. I don't like that it was thrust it upon us. Especially, it wasn't the tribes who brought it forward. And I liken this to a situation where someone tossed a rock and it's like, we, tribe's gotta get on board now, right? Cause naturally, someone who's being, feels that they're being threatened when it comes to the Kelseyville name, they're gonna fight back. They're gonna say, I want to keep this name. And I think that's why it's laid dormant for so long. So I think that, that's what frustrates me, but at the same time, I know that there was an intent to do good and to try and do something moral. And I, so I don't, I don't want to make the folks that, you know, tried to do this feel like, you know, they're bad for doing it. I know it was an attempt to do right. So I'm just, you know, gonna say that uh I'm, I'm uh in favor of option two. And that's the only one I'll be going for or voting for.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, appreciate everybody's comments today. Everybody knows where I stand uh very clearly. I said it at the last meeting. I'm very clear about it. Change the name. The healing can start. Couple of people came up here and said, we can't do nothing about it. Yeah, you can do something about it. You know, from a leadership standpoint, it is tough. It was an advisory vote. I wanted it on record where this county stood with its native population. It's on record now. No running away from it. I got what I wanted. I made that very clear here. And just to let you guys know, we've been working on Cultural Center for 30 years. I've been a leader of my tribe for that long. And we've been working on it. We'll figure it out when we get enough funds to do it. Don't worry. We'll have one of the best in the world. And we're working on it, you know, as nations. This isn't going away. Whether you think you win or you lose one side or the other here, the education has started. People have stood in this room and said, I did not know what this vote meant or who we are voting for. The education has started. Town of Kelseyville name will change before they put me back in the earth. I'll guarantee that. I wanted this to be a national focus. I wanted us to under- understand and work together. You've never heard me say, I wanted the name Canocti. I haven't ever said that. That's what came before us. I think you guys have built a brand name in Kelseyville. Pearville, I think, would be better than Kelseyville. I think that the Scully Packing, that family that has done positive things there. You wouldn't have to change your name, mark or your business, you know, of Kelseyville Lumber. If that's the name you want to have, you can have that name. You know, I've heard you made that statement a couple of times. I walked through those doors, you know, we do business together. None of this stuff is a personal attack on anybody, but my beliefs and my people were murdered and massacred. The first governor of this state paid $1 million for the heads and the bodies of native people just to continue on with the taking of our land and to put us where we needed to be. But we're still here. I was the first native elected almost 100 years after we were even able to vote or consider people, not animals and dogs. And so proudly this county has come forward. Thirty percent people voted right now in that advisory thing to help us move forward. And that's a positive step. The education has started. There's no turning it off. You're gonna be able to stand on one side or the other. It may, we may vote positively. I, I don't know how it's gonna turn out today, but you know how I'm voting. Change the name, bottom line. From, from, from the beginning of this, I'm sorry for the position that it's put some of these folks in because it, it's a tough one. It is. And when you have hatred thrown at you and you have slurs and you have get over whatever, y- y- you know, to have those kind of things that shock you, it's what we live with every day, every day. When I leave this room today, if you think I'm not gonna be, you know, loudened for saying what I say, I always am. But I try to be upfront, try to have conversations. I've had proud conversations where people say, I completely disagree with you, but you're upfront and you let me know where you stand. So, and I've heard off this diocese before I was a board member. I heard a member on this diocese right here, when I was here asking for something for business, say, it isn't the job of this board to take care of the Indians in this county. Well, we goddamn changed that, didn't we? And yes, that's a cuss word. I apologize uh that it's there. But people do use foul language, not only here, heck, they fight at the US Senate, right? They try to punch each other, push you. That's not what we're doing. We're gonna come together as a community whether people want to or not. We're never gonna agree on everything. But as the chairman said from Big Valley, we ain't going nowhere. They tried to kill us, rape us, murder us, take our land, burn us out, destroy all of our vegetation and say the first agricultural here was grape? No, the first agriculture here was Manzanita berries, acorn. They hit, those were here before any of this stuff started. I am always who I am. I appreciate everybody. I respect you. If there's a disaster, our people will always be there to help the community as we do. I myself will be there to help the community as I do. And many friends and family I stand or friends that are on the different side of this subject, that doesn't affect the people that I've known all my lives. So you guys know how I want it voted. We're gonna come down to a vote today. And then it's not gonna stop there. Even if we got the vote today as this board of a majority to change the name, there's a new board coming in at the beginning of the year. That very well could be brought back by the new board. So I, I'm in no, you know, fantasy land that whatever happens today, it's over with. If you look at the history of this, the SQ name was changed. But then the Board of Supervisors down there in Fresno turned around and didn't want to honor that change. That's a conversation still going on. So I am no fool on how this stuff works and no one else should be fooled by that either. But if we're gonna come together, I think we got a chance to do it after all these meetings and what has happened in that advisory vote. I heard some people that were staunch about no change of names. We're gonna be talking about it. So if you think the tribes aren't gonna take that opportunity over the next decade to work on this or the next 20 years till it's changed, it's gonna get changed because we ain't going anywhere. It's that simple. So thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. And yeah, I don't avoid Kelseyville. I love what Kelseyville does up there, but let's get a different name on that. And I gotta use Kelseyville right now because that's what it's called. I'd rather call it a different name, but we're not there yet. So we'll continue working on it. So that's what I have to say. You guys know where I stand. Let's get the vote done. And I said it when the advisory, I just want it on record. So when we have a discussion, I will know exactly where we're standing and the work that I gotta do as a person to get things changed in this county. And I think I've done a pretty good job. We have done a pretty good job and the constituents have done a good job. You got two native people sitting on this board. You got two native people sitting on this board, something to be proud of. The only one in the state's history that Lake County has that. That's a pretty god darn good thing as far as I'm concerned. So, anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Green?
There's some tough acts to follow, so I'm apologizing in advance for my very boring comments, but when I'm looking at the BGN process, it helps to read the directions from time to time. And, so I did that. I've gone through their principles, policies, and procedures quite a bit and they're applicable to the comments I've heard here today, pro and con. So the general result of the advisory ballot measure, strong preference to keep the name. In the BGN principles, there's a strong preference to keep existing names. Whether they're good people or bad people, it's not really called out in there, but if there's a historical name in there, the underlying principle that the Board of Geographic Names is to let sleeping dogs lie, and that's probably not the best way to put it. But in that context, just to give some credence to what's been spoken here today, Kelseyville is an existing place name that is widely published and used in legal documents. Substantial evidence exists that the place name derives from the settlement of Andrew Kelsey and Charles Stone and has historical significance. Present-day usage and local preference as established by Measure U and other public input from July and before are sufficient in and of themselves to establish Kelseyville of deserving of strong consideration by BGN to leave the name in place. That said, that underlying principle has several other rules and regulations and policies that the Board of Geographic Names uses to, to establish when a compelling reason might exist to change a name. And the petition that Citizens for Healing filed is best classified as one under BGN's terms, a petition made to eliminate particular name problems as in proposals involving names asserted to be derogatory or offensive. And on the short form list of the BGN, the Kelseyville petition is described as one made to change name considered offensive, four words. Very quickly, there's another policy in BGN involving commemorative names. So although I want to acknowledge that there's a strong preference for a historical name, there's no evidence that's been presented to this body that I'm aware of that the naming of Kelseyville was a personal commemorative, commemorative name, that some family, family members came up later and said, "Let's do this." Sounds more like an accidental legacy thing that the post office eventually picked up, if I heard right from my colleague. So I just wanna mention that commemorative name policy, because I don't think it applies to Kelseyville. I don't think there was any commemoration intentionally granted upon Mr. Kelsey. And I also think that, just for BGN's thing, I don't think BGN should by default uphold names that commemorate white settlers of European heritage without any consideration of the area's earliest indigenous residents. The widespread practice of applying personal commemorative names to geographic features should be acknowledged by BGN as antithetical to the preservation of native place names and this policy in particular should not be applied during BGN's consideration of the petition regarding Kelseyville. Here's the most important policy in those guidelines, derogatory and offensive names. This policy allows BGN to consider on a case-by-case basis whether a place name is derogatory or offensive. And on this subject, it's game, set, match. Our tribal nations have stood up consistently over many years, not just in hearing of this, about the injustices done, not just in Kelseyville, what is now called Kelseyville by Andrew Kelsey and Charles Stone, but by generations of settlers that came in after that and set up camp on what used to be tribal lands and subdivided them and turned them into a little Eurocentric part of Europe such that we are Lucerne and we are Nice and we are the Clearlake Highlands. And the only distinction between that and Kelseyville is those European place names are not named after a murderous thug like Andrew Kelsey. So this policy is where the rubber meets the road. This policy clarifies that BGN will not approve any name that is determined to be offensive to a particular racial or ethnic group. Kelseyville is offensive to our Native American brothers, sisters, and ancestors. And if you haven't had the opportunity in your own lives, whether you've lived here all your life or whether you're just coming to Lake County, if you haven't processed that, Kelseyville is an offensive name to Native Americans and to a small plurality of Lake County residents who are not Native American, based by the 30% plurality in, in the Measure U vote. Tribal geographic names, Canokti is one, there are others. I also appreciate the comments about, you know what, if we'd had a little more time, we might've worked on this and would've appreciated the opportunity to work together on this and had the ability to vet it, not just with our seven sovereign nations, but with the other community members who are gonna inherit this name. So, but you gotta, you gotta play the hand you're dealt. And so the petition happened, there was some level of tribal consultation and the proposed name change to Canokti does meet all of the BGN stated criteria. Mount Canokti is a dominant topographic feature of the Kelseyville area and much of Lake County and the mountain itself looms large in geological, historical, and cultural contexts. Finally, I wanna point out that this is not gonna be the last thing. Public input is still open at bgnexcc@usgs.gov. I confirmed that yesterday. And all the principles, policies, and procedures I'm talking about are available on the USGS website under the Board of Geographic Names. And if you haven't had the opportunity to read them, I encourage you to do that now. So, I wanna put that in context of the advisory ballot measure, because the Board of Geographic Names didn't say, "Go out and do a ballot measure and we'll honor that." Their open-ended procedure is to gather and present all relevant information needed for their board to render its decision. Their procedure expressly calls for consultation with the Board of Supervisors and it further allows for tribal consultation. The procedure does not describe how or whether the results of local ballot measures pertaining to proposed name changes should be considered in federal proceedings. So, I know that's kind of a lot to process after a long day. But some people have said, "This is such a mysterious process." It really isn't. The general principle is we don't change geographic place names unless we have a compelling reason. There seems to be ample compelling reasons, plural, in this point. And one reason why we would think about doing it now versus later or 300 years from now is, look at the argument we're having over this. We don't even agree what Kelseyville is. Is it the small census-designated place of about 3,300 people, the town people themselves, the thing I most associate with Kelseyville? Is it the larger county census division or the Kelseyville plan area and the general plan? Is it Kelseyville Unified School District boundary or Kelseyville Fire Protection District? Or is it this even larger zip code area of 95451? The murderous name of Kelsey has expanded over the years by inaction and just assumption that the whole region now is named after Mr. Kelsey, not just the small little settlement. And we have to be upfront in addressing not just the racial discrimination of years past against American Indians. I, I was down at the library on Saturday, I was trying to figure out that monument at the end of Main Street, how that came to be and what role the county had in it. And unfortunately, I couldn't find any information. Apparently, we did have a role in it, I just couldn't figure out exactly what. And that monument just speaks to me in 100 different ways. It like buries the lead. It's like, here's the first Adobe settlement. Oh, by the way, it was built with slave labor. And by the way, the guys that did it are buried here. I don't know of any other historical monument that does that. And it's, it's wrong. But as I'm going through the newspaper of what used to be the Lake County Bee before it was the Record Bee, I find other things in there like on A1 News, "Oh, we're gonna have a minstrel show put on by the Odd Fellows and they're gonna have it at the Kelseyville High School gym." Like, oh, that was a different time. Rotary phones were coming to Lakeport, 1950. It, it's hard to process, just, you, you can't change history, but you sure can be selective in your remembrance of it. And if you learned history like I learned history in high school, you got no education on Native Americans. My high school, Fresno High School, three years ago went through its little mascot change drama. And then I go to my high school reunion, they're still so mad about it. And, and I never even heard about it till after the fact. So my sense of outrage or lack thereof is, is muted by proximity, by the blessings of distance and time. So although this is very in-your-face and all that right now, I, I hope that the good people of Kelseyville, and they are good people, understand that if, if they don't know which way the wind is blowing, they're, they're gonna know after today. I, I am sensitive to Mr. Borgasani's comments and to others, that we need time to process. So if I were gonna offer any type of friendly amendment to option two, it would be to definitely recommend that the name change, the name Kelseyville has gotta go bye-bye. But my understanding of this process is next stop is gonna be the California Advisory Committee on Geographic Names. Our state government also has an Office of Tribal Affairs. It'd be nice to kind of circle back and do some listening sessions, to have some dialogue before making a recommendation on, on the actual name change, Canokti. That said, if there's consensus to go ahead with that, I'll certainly support that. But it'd be, if I were to craft something, it, it would be option two with the recommendation to refer the proposed name change to CACGN and, and their state partners before bringing it back to BGN for consideration. But I'm not gonna burden this discussion with that form of the motion right now. But as to the core issue, do I support the name change as the petition with BGN currently requests? Yes, I do. And I'm open to any number of, any number of discussions about whether we lock in Canokti. And one reason I would do that is, it is possible that we, future discussions will kind of soften hearts and minds. I think today's meeting demonstrates that. It is, the temperature is much different than it was at the end of July and I wanna thank you all, because I can see that you're working on this. And I can't sit up here saying like, "Oh, I'm just the arbiter of moral justice here," because two years ago, you know, we, we talked about like, "Oh, it's just our opinions, we have to respect the opinions of the people." Well, we also have to protect the people. We have to provide for the public safety, health, safety, and welfare of all our residents, all our residents. And on top of that, we have to represent the county government itself. We have to maintain good tribal relations. We don't have the luxury of just blowing things off. And future collaboration on any number of environmental projects, building projects, cultural building projects relies on a common, shared vision. We couldn't even get a, a land acknowledgement. You know, I was gonna think about that and then they blew it up at the school district, so God forbid we bring in a land acknowledgement. I was hoping we could acknowledge it today. We are on ancestral lands of Pomo peoples. So, I've kinda rambled now, but there is some method to my madness. I am very sympathetic. If I'm off the board in three weeks, if you wanna sit there and talk about SEO and some Canokti brands, I will help too. You know, I've done some web development and some marketing and all that. I do think there are some challenges ahead and one reason buying a little bit of time with the state agencies to kind of vet the final name may provide some advantage, is you may wanna talk about some of those marketing things before we lock in that name. But I do agree that Canokti is a great name, still has a K, pretty easy to pronounce. And so from a marketing perspective, it, it, it speaks a lot about proceeding with that name today. So with that, I will, I will shut up.
Supervisor Paeska?
When we first got the letter from the BGN last winter, we started having conversations with the BGN and the Kagan. And my first question to them was, "If you're going to do this, if a name were to change, what would implementation look like? Where would the resources be?" And it was, there were, and, and we also submitted several questions to ask what the process would be like so that we could have clarity, so everyone could understand, so there would be public information. And I think that's one of the failures, is they never showed up to do that, to support us in that way. I feel like this process was dropped on us, dropped in my lap as the elected supervisor for this district. I've made my position very, very clear. I, I respect my colleagues, it's not something, that is a vote I would have to abstain from because we do not know still what's gonna happen. And you can question my leadership all you want, but I have sat with everyone who wanted to sit with me throughout this last year and I have truly listened to everyone and I honored everything that everyone has shared with me. Well, I do thank you for your vote. You don't have to do it again next time. But I have also really seen productive conversations happen. I've, I've, I've seen people really, really try and learn. They may not have changed their vote, but they're in a different place than they were last year. I think all of us are in a different place last year. And so this is, this is not the end. This is, I feel like this is the beginning. And I'm gonna keep showing up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna show up tomorrow at Big Valley when they celebrate, when you celebrate your opening. And I'm gonna keep showing gratitude for all the work that Tribal Health does and all the money that they invest in our communities, because we are all in this region together. And we have seven tribal nations, we have our county government, we have our city governments, and we are in this isolated region where we all need to work together, live together, and be together. And so, the conversations that I had directly with the BGN, I told them, "You will not ever get a recommendation from me, because I have to support my community, however the chips fall and whatever happens." And that's what I'm committed, I, I'm committed to that work. And I know that it takes a long time to build that trust. And having those conversations with each of you this year, we made steps building that trust and I'm, I'm committed to continuing that. But I, I can't, I can't make a recommendation. That's, I committed to you all, I gave you my word and, and that's where my promise is.
Thank you. So, I spoke earlier. My position is still the same. I, I would love to see us find a, a option C to the original option A and B provided to us from the BGN. Sitting here and having to choose one over another is, I need to choose what's best for the future of this community. And what's best for this community, and it's something I wholeheartedly believe in, is that we have a system that allows us to solve problems. And if that solves, if that system loses the public trust, then we have no system to be able to utilize to solve problems. And I'm gonna continue to do what I do personally to continue to make change, but today, if option two is on the table, then I cannot say yes. And with that, I'm looking for action.
Well, I just have something to say.
Please.
So, I can't abstain without a reason, so I can't support that option, but I just wanna be honest with all of you, why my vote would have to be no if that is option two. But I would ask my colleagues to please include the voted people in that, say, "This is what the people have said in the measure and this is what the board is voting for." So that at least we're delivering what the people are saying also. So that at least we're delivering what the people are saying also.
It's in there.
It's not.
It's not, it's not an Option 2 specifically.
It's not specifically in there? So if we need to tweak the language?
It's in there. What do you mean?
I've demonstrated their opposition.
In response to Advisory Measure U, but...
What's the number with it?
Oh, yeah, we'll give them the results for sure. But some of you raised questions about the ballot arguments being fraudulent and all that. I just want to hide out, you know, because I'm going to get, if we move ahead, we're going to get hammered. So the wording of a ballot question is a really hard way to try to solve a complicated social issue. So having gone through the BGN process and explained it, you know, the proper question, whether it would have been legal or not in the form of a ballot argument, wouldn't be a coin toss, because that's what the ballot question was. Which do you like better, Kelseyville or Kanakai? It's a coin toss. That's not what BGN was asking us. The proper question, if we had posed it to the voters, if you had to change the name, or if you at least acknowledged the name is offensive to our Native American partners here, would Kanakai be an acceptable replacement? And that's a different question, right? You may not agree with the idea that the name should change, or ever will change. But if the name did have to change, would Kanakai be okay? And how would that election have gone? Because it's, because one, it forces consideration, like, oh, why would we change the name Kelseyville? And we never got that far in the ballot measure it was placed out there. So again, I think it was informative. I think it was demonstrated not just support from tribal communities, but in a plurality of 30%, that that's well above the demographic representation of Native Americans in our community. So I just wanted to clarify that. Yes, there was an advisory measure, yes, we're going to give them the vote totals. But I don't necessarily take it as gospel, because one, it wasn't binding upon us, certainly not binding on the federal government. But most importantly, I don't know for a fact that we asked the right question. So just wanted to point that out.
Looking for action.
All right, just want to make sure I get it right, Lloyd. It said two actions here, but I think we only need one, right?
Well, each action item, A and B, A refers to the letter, and B refers to BGN standard recommendation form. So the suggestion here would be to do each on separate motion.
So I want to move to approve Option 2 with the suggested change. It sounded like there was a majority, at least three wanted to add in that Measure U and put the number of the percentages in there. So...
So is it the proposed name change that you said?
It's... Wait, 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 wait. There's no public comment at this moment in time. Option 2 with the changes that were offered in order to have the percentages of the election results placed on there.
Yep, and that's my motion.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, or members of the board, if I may, just as a general, including in that motion approval, a motion to approve that letter as outlined by your board with the changes.
With the changes or additions. That's my motion, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Part B?
Part B. I move to modify as needed and approve the BGN standard recommendation form. Second.
If I may.
Please.
Mr. Chair, so the, the BGN form itself references the attached letter. So that would also, and just for purposes of confirming for this Item B motion, it would be the motion to approve the geographic name proposal recommendation as modified and as reflected by the, the letter outlined or identified in the first motion that was approved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming here and expressing yourselves, and thank you.